Okay, at 7 o'clock I will open tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board, Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. I will ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you have a smart device, a computer, a smartphone, or a tablet, and wish to participate in the public comment section of the meeting, you can do so using the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you do not have any of those devices but still wish to participate, you can do so by phone. The number is 888-475-4499, and once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the Open Meeting Law. Do we have any public comment tonight from the Board?
None.
No.
Any public comment from the public? Mr. Beardmore.
Good evening, Peter Beardmore.
Ask in all, I can still recognize you.
Yeah. Good evening, Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. Here this evening in my capacity as Chair of the Finance Committee to repeat one announcement and offer another. The other is that this Thursday, the Finance Committee will be holding its public hearing on the articles that will appear on the warrant this year. This is part of our duties as prescribed by the Charter. We will hear an overview of all of the articles, a presentation, I would imagine, on some, and the public will be invited to ask questions and comment on any and all articles. The public forum is then closed, the hearing is then closed, and the Finance Committee will then have the opportunity to vote recommendations on each article. Our options are to recommend, to approve, to recommend, to disapprove, to find no financial impact, or to defer to town meeting. The first three of those options, should we choose them at the public hearing, will be printed in the warrant, which will go out to all the citizens in the town. So I would invite any members of the public who are interested in participating in the public hearing to do so this Thursday at 7:00 PM right here, or on Zoom, the link of which is published on the town website, on the town calendar. The other event that I want to just state again, for those of you who might not have heard my first invitation, is that on the 28th of this month, the Finance Committee will be hosting a joint meeting with the School Committee and a representative from the Mass Association of School Committees, where we'll be discussing Chapter 70 funding, which is our local aid for education funding, and getting an overview on Lunenburg's situation with respect to Chapter 70. And as I've articulated here before, we've been relatively flat the last couple of years, and we're looking for some explanation and advice in terms of what we can do there. I have reached out to the members of our legislative delegation, and all three have responded back with their intent to participate. I think two members will be here live and one will be remote. But again, members of the public will be invited also to ask questions and participate on a limited basis, but it's a good opportunity to hear what we hear while we hear it, and to let our legislators know what an important issue this is. Thank you very much.
Before you go, I just want to make sure that the public hearing this Thursday is full participation in person or Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one question. You may have said it, and I may have missed it. The meeting on the 28th, what's the time on that?
It's at 7:00 PM. It's our regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting, but we'll be holding it jointly with the School Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? The announcements, Madam Town Manager?
None.
I do have one announcement. Making its way across many, many pages on social media today was a lot of public officials who are alerting the public. If you have, as most of us in Lunenburg, and Townsend, and Fitchburg, and Ashby have, the fabulous luxury of being provided electricity by Unitil. They have filed with the DPU for a, I don't want to say a rate increase per se, but it's a difference in how they are going to be able to do the residential fixed basic service rate when it comes to the, I'm trying to think of the part of the bill that it is.
Electricity supply.
Supply. Right, thank you. Electricity supply. That will, if requested, if allowed by their request, would raise the rates of, according to their own document, the average monthly bill will see an increase of $61.96 a month, or 37.9%. So they are asking people to file comments online or written by mail, and all of us are suggesting to the public that if this is not sitting well with you, that you provide such written comment while the period is open. It is open until the comment period, I think, is
Next Monday.
October 18th, 2021. So if you're going to mail it in, probably should have mailed it yesterday, but if you're going to do it online, you can do it until that date. For those people in Lunenburg, because this is the electric supply, and we are part of a cooperative
Municipal aggregation.
In our town, we have secured for the town a three-year rate. Instead of the 19.88 cents per kilowatt hour that Unitil is requesting be okayed, we have one that's 11 cents, so eight, almost, you know, almost a half the price, and we have secured that rate for three years.
Yes.
So if you are a resident of Lunenburg, and you have not opted out of that, you will be getting that, and you will not be subject to this increase. But if you have opted out of the aggregation, we highly recommend that you opt back in, and all of that's done through Unitil, so that this will not affect you. So I just wanted to make that announcement. And again, all the public officials, state and local, are putting this on their Facebook page. I've shared it as well today, as well as our state representatives and some city councilors in Fitchburg, and I'm sure it's going to be on more and more pages. We just received this yesterday.
I have more in my report. Do you want me to address that now?
Sure. Sure.
So this, as Chairman Alonso stated, this rate was filed with the DPU for comment. The Attorney General has already provided comments on this rate increase. They are asking this be reduced, the rate increase be reduced by 50%. So, but no determination has been made yet by DPU. Our municipal and community service representative, John Donapoli, reached out to me to offer working with the town, to contact all the customers that currently have opted out of the municipal aggregation program, to send them notifications that they can still opt in at any time. So we will be working with them on that.
It was good foresight for those people who brought that municipal aggregation up for Lunenburg to allow us to have that. We've had that for many years now, but this is a great example of why, so. Okay, 7:05. We have a common victual license hearing for AJD's Cafe LLC doing business as Lunenburg Diner at 324 Electric Ave, Number 3. Are they present? If you would come, or Representative, you can both come up, or one of you, at least one of you, hopefully.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing well. How about yourself?
Doing very well. My name is Arthur Dragostlis. It's my wife Judith. Two crazy grandparents that decided to move back to this area from Florida.
Well, that's a reverse commute.
Yeah, it is. Glad to be here, and currently building a house in Lunenburg at 971 Northfield Road, which is across from Saddle's Crossing.
Welcome to town.
Thank you. Yeah. So we decided, we moved here for personal reasons, for our parents and stuff like that, which since then have passed, and we lived in the area before. So, and we saw the opportunity to open up a diner in the previous Whalen Kitchen, previous before that, I believe it was the Ugly Omelet, and being so close to our house and seeing the need for something like that in the area, we decided to invest. So we're asking the Board for Vic license. Experienced for over 40 years in the food industry and the entertainment industry, having to entertain a lot of drunk people in the bar business in Florida, which we're not doing that anymore, obviously. So we're asking the Board for permission and approval of the Vic license.
I will open it up to the Board for questions, if they have any.
No questions.
Just talk a little bit to the people, I mean, most people are familiar with the Ugly Omelet and Whalen Kitchen. Talk a little bit about what your hours will be.
Hours will be Monday through Saturday from 6:30 to 2:30, and Sunday from 6:30 till 1:30, seven days a week. Open to employ about 20 to 25 people. We had the privilege of having a lot of young kids, high schoolers, actually looking for jobs on Saturday and Sunday, obviously because they go to school from Monday through Friday, which is something positive in this time of age, because everybody says, well, nobody wants a job, nobody wants a job. That's not true. There's a lot of young kids, you know, that are, now, I don't know if they're being forced by their parents to get a job, but, you know, I'm here to tell you that they do come and apply, which is a great thing. So, and we're planning to employ some of those young kids as either bussers, or dishwashers, or waiters and waitresses, and so on and so forth.
So the hours lead me to believe, obviously, it's very similar to what it was, a breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch. Yes.
Everything checked out?
Obviously, we're looking forward to being serviced by Unitil too, right? So
Across the street. As a 23-year rate payer, no better joy.
Yes.
But looking forward to another breakfast place. It's been
I don't think there is another breakfast place. That's the other thing.
There is. There's a couple in place, but
Which one? Stellus is the only one that we have here in town.
Right.
I don't think the six of you can fit in there.
But, yeah, I mean, it was a shame when the pandemic, you know,
Absolutely.
Closed the, closed the Whalen. So, and as I, as I went to drop off my car across the street, I saw the sign, and I'm like, oh, I thought that's where it was going to go. I wasn't sure.
Correct. Correct. Les is a good garage, too. He's a good guy.
When are you looking to open?
Probably the end of this month, or beginning of the month. We've, November 1st, I think, is our targeted time. We'll see whether we can do it the weekend before that. So that's what we're looking for.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Well, I think this is an exciting opportunity. I'm always looking for a breakfast joint, usually one day a week at least. So it'd be exciting to have something that's a little closer.
You'll be absolutely flabbergasted by what you're going to see on the menu.
Okay, well
Something that you, there's nothing around here, so.
Yeah, well, I'm looking forward to it. What is your intention long-term with selling mimosas and alcoholic drinks?
We don't sell mimosas or alcohol. We can sell NA mimosas and NA vermosas, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, so, well, no, but I imagine I know what it is.
Not alcoholic.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, you take orange juice and a little Perrier, and you put it in there, and you think that you're drinking a mimosa, but it's not.
Interesting.
Okay?
Yeah, I got that it was non-alcoholic, but I didn't know how you would do that.
Correct.
I usually go for the alcoholic drinks.
Sorry. Sorry.
I think it's a great thing for you to mention about the employment for students. Do you have an estimate at this point about approximately how many students you plan on employing?
So far, we had about, what, four or five?
Five, five or five so far.
Four or five?
All right. And I would imagine that there, you'll probably have some, some members of the senior community probably looking for part-time work as well. You know, that would be a great opportunity for many people. So I wholeheartedly support what you're trying to do. That was my only question.
I will tell you that my biggest concern of doing this, because this is kind of crazy to open up or invest in a business in this environment, COVID and everything else, uncertainty, product acquisition. I mean, you cannot get products. I mean, we had companies that were applied, like Cisco, they're saying, sorry, we're not taking your accounts. We cannot service you.
Oh, wow.
So we don't have product coming in. And truly, even me, when I go to, you know, big warehouses like Restaurant Depot, Andover, or Milford, empty. Shelves are empty. So there is a crisis going on. But as I mentioned at the beginning, two crazy grandparents moving from Florida to Massachusetts, so.
We like to pride ourselves on being a farming community, and so there, I think that there, you know, as you're looking at product, you know, there aren't really
Son of a farmer.
Good.
I grew up in a farm.
There aren't any farm-to-table breakfast restaurants that I'm aware of anywhere nearby. So, you know, not telling you how to run your business, but saying that there's probably some opportunity there to
Absolutely.
Work with our farming community.
Very good to know.
And that would be a huge benefit to the town.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, this is, this is great, and I wish you well. I wish you well, and I hope that you can overcome the challenges of supply side, but I plan on helping out on the demand side.
Thank you. Perfect.
I'll just say that breakfast is my favorite meal of the day, so I very much look forward to
The most important one, too, right?
That's right.
There you go.
That's right.
All right.
You have the right personality for this business.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Been doing this for a long time. Yeah.
You made the point three times, so I'm coming in just to see the crazy. But I'm coming in for the crazy.
If I have my six grandchildren with me, you're going to see a lot of craziness there.
I would entertain a motion on the request for the common victual license for AJD's Cafe LLC doing business as Lunenburg Diner, 324 Electric Ave, Number 3.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
Take care.
I'll look forward to the, put an ad in the Lunenburg Ledger when you're opening.
We are. We were waiting for the license actually to come through before. We have the website and everything else. It's just we're waiting for this to be properly done. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, 7:10. Another common victual license hearing for BKK Group LLC doing business as Bangkok Hill, 177 Mass Ave.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Robert Bowen, 1686 Mass Ave for BKK Group LLC doing business as Bangkok Hill. The Bangkok Hill is changing hands. The new owners are here. Manrod, give you a stand-up. Then Natalie. And we are looking for a common Vic license.
Okay. Any
Essentially, the operation is not going to change.
Okay, that was, I was, that was my first question.
Well, there is one change. For the time being, they're not going to have alcohol, so they're going to be turning in their liquor license. They may get one somewhere down the road.
Otherwise, everything's the same.
Yes. They're not currently serving indoors. They're just takeout right now.
Okay.
I just wanted to make the point, if they let their liquor license lapse, they may have to go through the, just so they're aware, the whole process, like it's a new license again.
Yep.
Is it beer and wine, Rob, or?
I believe it's just beer and wine.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. Good.
Are they planning on going through the, are they, in the future, is it in their minds that they're going to go through that process to get the alcohol license?
They are probably going to. We're starting an application now. I think it's just going to be beer and wine.
Okay.
Okay. Everything checked out?
Yes.
With all the background checks and taxes? I would open it up to the Board if anybody has any questions.
No questions?
None.
No.
Yeah, I just have a couple, not many. First, good to see you, Mr. Bowen.
Good to be seen.
It's been, it's been a little while. Are the owners intending to operate it themselves?
Yes.
Okay, so the owner operated?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's very straightforward. I've enjoyed going to Bangkok Hill, so I look forward to going to it with, under new management and ownership.
Indeed.
Okay. If there are no other questions, it seems like a very straightforward transaction here. I would entertain a motion regarding the request for a common Vic license from the BKK Group LLC doing business as Bangkok Hill, 177 Mass Ave.
Second.
I should point out when I say, that's in motion, that I didn't say approve, but I'm going to assume you mean
Approve.
Yes.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good luck. I wish you continued success there for the, for the business.
Do we need to physically turn over that license to you?
No, so the executive assistant will send out renewal packages.
Okay.
So if they choose not to renew, that'll be noted in what we submit to ABCC.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is that what you meant, the liquor license?
The liquor license, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, 7:15. We're not catching up, and we're not falling further behind. We have a meeting with the Public Access Cable Committee Chairman regarding letters to legislators about pending bills on the streaming video over public rights of way, which I'm assuming that sentence, while all easy words in and of itself, you will explain to us.
That's what my seven pages are to do.
Okay, well, I'm going to sit back. Go ahead.
I will try and do in nine minutes. So, there's a bill to establish a comprehensive statewide policy concerning compensation for the use of digital infrastructure in the public right of way. There are two versions. They're presently in committee. The House one is 130, Senate 2200.
Ask you to hold there. We all have that in our Google Drive. You could review the packets.
Okay. A little bit of history, the Cable Act of 1984, which was a while ago. A municipality such as us can negotiate a franchise fee from the cable company for use of public rights of way, which is what we've been doing for a few years, and we have a contract right now with Comcast for our public cable access. It's typically done every 10 years, and we presently get a 5% fee on video services that are provided over the cable. The monies are restricted for use in the provision of public education and government services over. We presently have three channels, which we have brought the third one up, so we're doing public channel, education channel, and a government channel. A capital infusion may also be negotiated, and we got $170,000, which we're holding in reserve for when we get our new space, which I hope will happen soon. Video services, what's happening? Video services are moving to the internet as streaming video. As such, they are not accounted in the gross video revenues. So as people are doing that, the amount we may end up with will start to drop. Further, people are doing what's called cable cutting, which you may have heard of, which really means they stop direct video channels, instead use the internet portion of the cable bandwidth for streaming. So if I'm a regular cable subscriber here in Lunenburg, Comcast can provide as an ISP, an internet service provider, and video service provider. I can kill all my regular channels off Comcast, save money that way, and move them pretty much all to the internet, which means they're not accounted for. This is still using the same infrastructure and the same rights of way, but the Cable Act of 84 wasn't structured to expect that. I have no idea why. They didn't realize this was going to happen, so. What the bill does is it imposes a statewide franchise fee on the use of public rights of way for streaming services. Such fees will be collected by the state rather than municipality. So we wouldn't have to individually negotiate with a cable company and every other town and village and hamlet around do the same thing. Such fees would be collected by the state and placed in a streaming entertainment fund and would then be dispersed. So 20% of these fees would go to the Commonwealth, 40% would go to municipalities such as Lunenburg, based on population. So they would, based on the number of people in the town. Interestingly, it doesn't seem to be based on the number of subscribers, but that's what they've chosen. And 40% would go to the community media center, being PAC, Public Access Cable, in this case, again, based on population. The impacts on PAC, cable cutting will reduce fees to run public access cable here in Lunenburg. By the way, that's what we're using right now. The, we presently get about $200,000 per year in franchise fees. We've seen a slight reduction in income at this point. Other media centers around seem to have taken a bigger hit than we have. Unfortunately, all of this is distorted by COVID, because people lost their jobs, but people also are spending more time at home. So one might have raised the video, one may have reduced it. So we can't really predict how this is going to behave, but it's reasonable to presume that the way we're structured at the moment, the fees will start going down. This bill would help reduce or eliminate the loss of operating revenue, and would also provide some revenue to the Lunenburg General Fund. The action being requested by PAC is based on Mass Access, which is an organization of public access centers in Massachusetts, has sent out, and I believe you should have copies, of a model letter that you can send as a board on behalf of Lunenburg can send in to the two committees. There are two separate committees, and the two separate letters have the names of the right people to go to and the address to send it to. So they're requesting media centers and municipalities to show support for this bill. Therefore, PAC is requesting, the Select Board does so on behalf of Lunenburg. At the moment, the bills are both in committee, so that's where the letters need to go to, but they're copied. The House bill, H130, is sponsored by State Representative Michael Kuschmerich, and I got in touch with the Office of State Senator John Cronin. Sadly, he didn't get in touch with me, so I don't know where he stands on it. Is that nine minutes?
I don't know, but it was excellent. One of the, I do have one question for you that you may or may not know, and it was, it pertained to the fact that they were going to be giving 40% to the municipalities, which caused you to, you know, comment that it seems to have nothing to do with the subscribers. And my question is, does this mean, it would seem to be, if they're not looking at subscribers, that that's going to be because it's, this streaming video is going to apply to any internet provider, which would include, let's say Verizon here in town, or any other entity, and they're going to be collecting it from them, even though they don't have any contract with us directly?
It seems, I'm glad you thought that through, because I hadn't gone that far. But as far as I can tell, they collect from the entirety of internet providers using public rights of way
Right.
Of the state, and then share it out according to their magic algorithm. Good thought, though. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Has anybody, has everybody had a chance to read through these and the sample letters? Does anybody have a comment, question, or motion in any of those orders? Well, keep the motion the last of anybody's comments or questions first.
Yeah, some questions. Thank you.
My only comment is
Uh, my, my only comment is thank you for clearing that all up. Now I get it.
So I'm sorry.
Thank you for clearing all of that up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you, you, you.
Did, did the best I could.
No, you did. Thank you.
So.
What, did you have a question?
No, I don't.
Um, I have a question just about the, and I, I haven't read the bills, so I don't know what the actual wording is there, but I know Comcast isn't gonna lose one dollar in profit. So, any, any talk about, uh, you know, distributing more money around, I, to me, sounds like an extra fee on everyone's Comcast bill. So, how, how is this fee going to be collected from Comcast? Is, okay?
I really can't tell because it, it seems odd in the first place that it's not done by a service provider per town, for instance.
Yep.
And it seems odd that it's not done based on subscribers. Um, the payout is done based on population is my understanding. Would you like a copy of each of the bills?
I, I think, I think it's in our drive, I just haven't read it. The, the other, my other question for you is, um, when we start talking about the state taking twenty percent off the top and then forty percent of it going to the General Fund of Municipalities, that's more than half the money collected now.
Right.
Is not going for the current intended purpose, right?
Right.
And, and, and so in order for there to be, so how much money do you anticipate that this is going to bring in every year compared to what the current arrangement brings in?
It's extremely difficult to anticipate the way this whole thing will behave. Right now, it's relatively simple, it's on video revenues, uh, by Comcast, uh, as provided in, uh, Lunenburg. And there is a, a fee in the bill for Lunenburg subscribers that contributes towards that. You're absolutely right, Comcast is unlikely to want to volunteer to give up one dollar. So quite how they're gonna make this work, I don't know, but I'm not one of the politicians working on it. I'm one of the people who hope to benefit from it, not suffer from it.
So i- in your correspondence with us, you're, you're stating that you are supporting this. So that, what is that, that support, I would assume, is based on anticipating more revenue?
Uh, I, I'm trying to mitigate the loss of revenue of the present franchise fee.
Okay.
It's not quite the same thing as real place.
Yeah. Okay, but, but the details of this aren't, aren't worked out, cuz I mean, what you're describing is a current plan in which, you know, PAC's receiving, you know, five percent of everyone's cable bills.
No, just the video service.
Just the video service, thank you.
Not the internet piece of it, just the video service.
So currently, PAC's receiving five percent of the video service for Lunenburg subscribers.
Right.
That this bill seeks to change that, so that way there's money that goes into a general fund that then gets distributed back out to people. And, given that our numbers are like eleven thousand, I don't know how I can, like, just thinking about all this, I don't know how I can see that us, that we as a town could even benefit from such a change, unless this amount collected, you know, is at least double what they're currently paying out, which means the customer.
From, uh, it doesn't, uh, change the Cable Act of eighty-four. Uh, this is an addition, so we still get the franchise fee, uh, as it starts dropping, which is what we expect.
Okay.
That's based on four thousand subscribers, which is approximately what we have in Lunenburg. Uh, the, so this hopefully is one of these that kinda goes like that. Um, I agree with you, uh, but I'm expecting that there will be a far, far more money being spent on internet services, um, and therefore feeding into this than, uh, presently on video services. You, you can't get by without the internet anymore.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you're correct, I think just, you know, simple, kinda simple math is if I round up our forty to fifty, right?
Yeah. No, you're right.
To five thousand, if I round off our four thousand to five and round down our population from eleven to ten.
Yeah.
And I'd say in order for the town to receive with this new formula of, what is it, twenty, forty percent, and then goes back into PAC of the funds collected? So in order for the town to be equal, we have to see almost a double contribution to the cost.
No, 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 I think you're missing the point, they're not, they're not eliminating what we existing.
Correct.
Contract is. It is just supplementing it. So as, as people cut the cable cord and that, that revenue decreases.
Right.
It is assumed by most people that the streaming rev, streaming use will go up, and therefore, and in the House version, it's a five percent assessment of the streaming entertainment operator's gross annual revenues derived from streaming entertainment. So in much of the same way that we're calculating the five percent of the video services from contract, Comcast, the Commonwealth is looking to put five percent on anybody providing streaming services of a certain size, I think the, your minimum, you have to be a company that bills more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is basically everybody. And they'll tax that, so as that goes up and the other one goes down, presumably, at least it'll equalize.
There's a hope that it will balance, it's basically difficult to predict, but it's way better than not doing this.
No, I, I, that, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Owens, that helps you understand it better. So, th- those, that was most of my questions, my, I guess my last one is, so when all this goes through, what, what keeps Comcast offering five percent? What, what stops them from saying, "We're gonna make a deal for two percent now"?
Well, uh, present, we have a ten-year contract.
Steve and I run that committee with some other people, so.
Yeah.
I, I.
Negotiated.
I, I, I understand that we currently have a ten-year contract.
But when that expires, we, when I say we, I really mean you guys, cuz it would go through the select board. Uh, if they say we don't want to pay any franchise fee or, uh, don't agree to the draft contract that would be negotiated, we have the ability to pull their license, which I believe if we pull it includes pulling the internet access, right? Not sure on that one.
No, I think it's just telecommunications. Just the, uh.
Well, it's the cable system.
Cable services.
So that's.
No, no, cable video services. Because their license with us is.
You're probably right.
Cable video services, not for their internet. And for those people who ask, why isn't Verizon here, for instance?
Yeah.
They could, they could apply for one, but they don't need one to be an internet presence in Lunenburg.
Right.
To provide video services directly, as opposed to indirectly through streaming, then you have to have a license.
All right, thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair? Just, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so essentially Comcast is in the same situation that you'd be in, right? So they're not, I mean.
The Comcast is what?
They're kinda in the same situation, uh, with respect to this proposed legislation, as you would be, right? They're not gonna, in other words, they're gonna, so cable use is going down and streaming use is going up, right? So wouldn't they kinda be in the same situation anyway? I mean, this is just to respond to Mike's concern.
Yeah, but presently, we only get paid by use of cable for video services. We want to get a fee for, uh, the infrastructure use for internet services, and so the two, hopefully, as one goes down, the other would go up. Uh, it may, may not be linear, I can't tell that, there may be a jump, there may be a, also could take five years for this to go through, so. We have, I think, six years left.
On the House side, I think if I'm, my math is correct, there's a hundred and sixty members in the House, uh, the, in the House part of the legislature, and I counted, I think I counted sixty cosigners, so it has a huge, uh, amount of people supporting it. Now, what, I didn't understand your question, Mr. Moreno, you said that they're in the same position.
Well, in terms of the, you know, in other words, so cable use is going down, right? So Comcast is a cable provider, right?
Right.
So when cable, when, they're kinda in the same boat, because cable use will go down, so they're gonna lose customers on cable.
Right.
People are streaming more, right?
Right.
So now they're gonna have to, um.
Jack their internet rates, which they have to compensate for that loss in revenue.
Well.
Well, not necessarily, because again.
Not necessarily, this is what I'm getting.
They have two, they have both, they have their fingers in both pots.
Right.
That's right, so it should, it should equal out.
Right. It's not gonna cost them presumably more money unless somebody cuts cable and they cut Comcast and they go to another internet provider, but if they cut the cable services and just amp up their streaming in, through Comcast internet, then this would effectively not have much to do. I mean, presumably, but again, right now, with the way our cable license is and the way all cable licenses in the Commonwealth are, once we negotiate the contract, it's for those video services. So there's a whole arena of existing streaming that has never been assessed anything. So I don't, I don't even know what that is, I mean, I don't know that anybody probably in the State House knows what that is. So there's gonna be, it'll be interesting to see what that is, cuz it could be a huge amount, and they're gonna say, wait a minute, we're taxing this, like, you're gonna make a windfall on this.
Well, most, I would presume that most customers who have cable have internet, but we know that there are people with just internet service without cable, so their customer base is gonna be larger than what they have now.
That's exactly right, that's what it's, right. So we actually could see, you know, a, an increase in that. Now, remember, to Mr. Jeffrey's point about, well, why would they continue to do this? There's been a concerted effort over the past five to maybe more years, maybe seven years, for the telecommunications, the video service providers to negate or cancel that whole telecommunication act and the act of going to each town and using their legal resources and accounting resources to negotiate with three hundred and fifty-one municipalities. And they said, we just wanna negotiate one with the, the state, and that's it. So they've been trying to get out of doing individual licenses, cuz if you have somebody who's, you know, putting it a stronger push, uh, and a, a, a city or a town is putting more pressure on Comcast and other people, you know, they have very uneven, I'm assuming, contracts.
The contracts range from two and a half percent and one channel.
Right.
Is the worst I've heard. Uh, our present one is five percent, which is the maximum, and three channels.
Right.
We do not have high definition, and there's a lot of discussion going on with that at the moment, the ones I've heard of, who, we have a side letter for high definition, uh, but Comcast is asking thirty thousand dollars back to put that up, so at the moment, we're not considering it.
So from, from an enti, from an entity perspective, entity being PAC, being the town, I understand, um, that, uh, it's more clear to me now what the benefits to the entities are. What's not so clear to me is the impact on the residents. You know, I don't know how Comcast organizes themselves, I, I would imagine that they have multiple divisions, and I would imagine that they have a video division, that they have a.
I'm sure you're right, yeah.
And, and that, and that if they're getting hit on revenue on one side, they're probably looking at that one side to figure out how to make up for it. So, I mean, I don't know how a large corporation, how this is gonna be handled, given that it's still in committee, so I, I'm not clear, is this informational, or are you looking for some kind of support?
Is it for us to sign the letter for supporting the two legislations?
Two, two letters, one to each committee, please.
One in the Senate and one in that.
There's no penalty in doing it, that I'm aware of, maybe a benefit.
And I would also say, first of all, during all these negotiations, and now this is, we're in our, I believe, third or fourth contract with Comcast.
I think it might be the fourth, the first one only had one channel.
And at every time that we've talked about it, and, and they fought us hard in this contract, but we have, you know, we managed to come to a, a negotiation and an agreement. Everywhere along the line, they said it, and then people, ratepayers said that, oh, you know, it's gonna raise the rates and we're gonna see a drop-off, and it's never, we've not seen the drop-off because of that. And number two, I think a reason we have not seen the drop-off and why I do support these two pieces of legislation, is people in town, before there was a community cable channel, people did without because they didn't know, but now that it's been existing, and then we added the second channel, and now we added the third channel, all of you know when you go to events, there's a lot of people watching these channels at all different times, for all different reasons, and if that scales back, cuz we can't support it, there will be an outcry that, hey, listen, you know, this was some, this was important to me. You know, a lot of people had no visibility into public meetings, for instance, or school events, or anything of that, before there was, you know, before there was PAC. And that has grown, and we've gotten the support of the townspeople over time, so there is that trade-off, yeah, it may increase rates to a certain degree, and I think it'll also be taxing, you know, assessing people like Verizon, who, who in this town hasn't been assessed, so I think people will see the benefit of it.
By chance, do you have the actual li, legislation in front of you?
You have it in front of you. Pending legislation.
Oh, do you have it there?
We do.
You're, you're welcome to these, otherwise I just have to.
No, no, we have, we have them.
We have them.
We have them on our drive. Any, uh, questions for Mr. Walker?
No questions.
I wanna thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome, thank you.
First of all, explaining that very well, and for, for all your work in the PAC.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
When is, um, when do these letters need to make it to committee by?
Well, they're in committee right now, so.
They're, they're in committee, and we do not have address, uh, dates.
Right.
But we're expecting it to be very soon.
So I am more than, I, I am very cognizant of the fact, and, and I will say one thing, I, I, you know, it's very rare, and I don't see it being likely tonight with no deadline that we would be introduced to something and then approve it in the same evening, so.
That's fine.
I, i- if your request or the way you're implying that you would like a week, I certainly understand that and would support that, that we should take a week, now that we know what it is, to read it before we sign the letters.
Yeah.
But feel free to sign it, anyway.
Yes, well, we will feel free to sign it, we just won't. Thank you. All right, so we will put that back on, so please can read whatever you need to read between then and, uh, now and next week, and then we will take it up as a vote next week. Seven twenty-five, a meeting with the Historical Commission regarding the demo delay bylaw amendment article for a special town meeting. Mr. McGrath, welcome.
Good evening.
Okay, so you have submitted to us, and everybody should have received, uh, the amended article from the Historical Commission? And so if you want to, if you want to just, for those people at home, review what you've modified since the first draft of the article was sent to us, uh, and then, then we can take the discussion from there.
Okay, so we've put in the, uh, during the delay period by the applicant, the Historical Commission, by means of submitting the document entitled demolition delay bimonthly report as a bimonthly, on it, as, on a bimonthly basis, beginning with the first day of the second month following the imposition of the demolition delay. This is to engage the applicant with the commission, previously, uh, they filled out an application, and then we didn't hear from them, uh, till the end of the process. Uh, often, we had to try to track them down to find out what was going on. Um, so this, uh, solidifies the, the situation, where we're in touch with them, they're in touch with us. We're requesting that, uh, an estimate, it was, said an estimate for moving the building or structure was required, uh, showing an attempt to, uh, try to save the building we're adding in its present condition. Um, there's been a problem with, uh, people applying and then just leaving the properties, and, and they get badly damaged in the, uh, time between they fill out an application and the end of the process. So we'd like to, uh, put that in to, uh, try to preserve the building in its present condition, uh, till the end of the process, um, where it would be, uh, saved or demolished according to, uh, what happened in between, if they met all the requirements for the demolition delay. Uh, then the application would go through for, for demolition. We, uh, put in any owner failing to submit the bimonthly report on the prescribed schedule shall have the demolition delay period extended one day for each day of delay in filing. Um, so we, uh, took your suggestion that, uh, time is a more effective deterrent, uh, to get people to comply than a, a financial penalty. We've added, at any time during the delay period, the Historical Commission may advise the building commissioner in writing to issue a demolition permit without waiting for the period to expire, if the commission decides that there is not a reasonable, there's not a reasonable likelihood that any entity is willing to purchase, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore, or move said structure. We wanted to add that for at least six months, the owner has made continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts to locate a purchaser to preserve, rehabilitate, restore, or move the subject structure and that such effort, efforts have been unsuccessful. So this gives us the flexibility, if for some reason the building is in bad shape, but it's historic and it's obvious that they're not gonna be able to sell it or move it. It gives us the opportunity to allow it to be demoed before the time period is up. Um, during emergency demolition, it says that the building commissioner or the chief can order the demolition of the building. If it's a hazard, we wanted to add that the appropriate commission shall be promptly notified of the decision. In the past, buildings have just been torn down, we've never been notified. So we drive by and it's gone. We had no reason, we didn't understand why. So this increase, all this increases the communication between applicant and town officials.
I can think of a couple of them that happened to them. I have a question for you.
Yes.
Uh, cause it says the appropriate commission. So this demo delay bylaw is outside of the village district applied by the Historical Commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
But inside the village district, it's applied, the same exact bylaw is applied by the APDC.
Correct, yes. Yeah, that's why that says that.
I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Franco.
First of all, I wanna say that I noted the substantial revisions and, uh, they overcame all of the major concerns that I had previously articulated. So thank you for that. I do have a couple of quick questions, though. Between A and B under four, uh, it's unclear based on the way that's drafted. Is there an or between A and B or is it an and? In other words, is it if one of those decisions is made, A or B or both?
That would be both.
So you may wanna include that. And so probably somewhere in, before this, before the colon, if the commissioner decides that both of the following are true. Something of that.
Either that or a comma or semicolon at the end of A and the word and.
I'm afraid that the and would get lost in the formatting. That's my only concern. It would work, but it's generally not done that way because I think the single trailing and may get lost.
Okay.
So how do you think it should read?
I mean, I'll just give a suggestion. I think town council would probably be best, but-
Yeah.
So it says in writing to issue a demolition delay without waiting for the period to expire if the commission decides that these two conditions are met, let's say. Or that these conditions are all met. Yeah, that's what I would say. These conditions are all met. That way you can add a C later on and you don't have to change the wording again.
But doesn't it, uh?
Right now, Mr. Franco's question is very on point. Right now, it reads that, it doesn't say whether A and B are exclusive or inclusive, that both of them have to be true or only one of them has to be true.
Or conjunctive and disjunctive, really.
So the, uh-
That's why he gets big bucks.
The lettering, A and B is the problem?
No, no.
It all should be as one?
No, it's the fact that there's no implied and or or currently.
I, I think, to Mr. McGrath, to your, to your point, if you were to combine them, you'd resolve the concern.
And if you do combine them-
They're two separate, they're two separate things, two separate evaluation points. They're not the same.
However, if it's, I, how I read this is, there doesn't need to be an A and B if it's just, if it's not an or.
Yeah.
So it can say there's not a reason, there's a reasonable likelihood, whatever, next sentence and, or comma and for at least six months, that it could be one combined statement.
Well, you could certainly, yeah, so again, format, usually it's not done this way. Usually it's done the way you have it here, but you could, in English, you could move the A up to right after the colon and you put in a, put A in parentheses and you say that whole thing. And then you do what Mr. Franco said and then say and, and then parentheses put B and then list it after. So you can list them in one big paragraph.
Or put a semicolon after the first one. Doesn't the-
You're looking at an and or an or.
So it says that the period, uh, it says if the commission decides that A, da-da-da-da, and B, da-da-da-da-da. It, doesn't that refer to both A and B?
I think so.
Yeah, there's lots of ways to do this.
Yeah, yeah, he's just concerned that the and is gonna get lost.
Depending on town council.
Right, let's, as long as we know that your intention is and, okay? So let's put a note in there.
We already went through town council with this, so.
Well-
He had reviewed it.
You know, it's, again, he's reviewing a lot of things a lot of times.
Yeah.
It's an easy nuance to miss, but it's an important one. I thank Mr. Franco for bringing that up.
So it should go back to town council for review?
Well, you don't have to go. We can, we can ask.
Okay, great, thanks.
For that. Any other questions about substantive parts of this?
Yes, and by the way, I could, I could earn at least several hundred dollars fighting over something like that, so.
Note to self, remember that.
Uh, I would make a similar comment with regard to number one above. Evidence shall include all of the following, A through D.
And that was actually my question.
Yeah.
So the way that number one reads says, bona fide reasonable attempts have been made to sell, comma, preserve, comma, move, comma, rehabilitate, or restore said building or structure. So with this being a list, I read this to say that if you've made an attempt to sell, you satisfied these requirements. If you've made an attempt to preserve, if you've made an attempt to move, but, or rehabilitate, that is, this is not an all-inclusive list. It's, you gotta do one, at least one of these things. So the way that it reads below, I just wanna make sure we have the same understanding, is that, that your intent, your, your understanding of this is the same as mine. That, that or means one of the, of these items, not all of these items. Is that a fair understanding?
Well, he's not, remember, I just wanna point out that he's not, and the commission is not adding or modifying, that's already there.
I, I understand. That's why I'm asking if that's how he translates. Is that how, is that how he reads it?
That's D one you're referring to.
I'm referring to your first one, just the number one. The very, uh, I think, yes, D one.
Bonafide reasonable attempts have been made.
Yeah, so it says shall include-
No, 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 the sentence before that he's referring to.
Yeah, where it says that bona fide reasonable attempts, uh, have been made to sell, preserve, move, rehabilitate, or restore said building or structure. That if someone makes an attempt to do one of those, do you read this to mean that they've satisfied these requirements?
Yes.
Alright, so then, so then it follows then that their report then does not need to list all four, all A, B, C, and D, it just needs to list one. Is that also your intent and your understanding?
And so if they're going to sell it, yeah, they'd list it. They wouldn't need an estimate to rehabilitate it. They wouldn't need to have an estimate for moving it. It would, yeah, it encompasses the different parts of that-
Got it.
Early sentence.
Okay. All these changes I think that have been made also satisfy all of my very, I think, serious concerns about the first version.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I, I will support these changes.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one other question. I just wanna make sure that this is what's actually intended. I don't, uh, up in the, during the delay period, the applicant must notify the Historical Commission by means of submitting the document, da-da-da-da, we'll call it the report, on a bimonthly basis, beginning with the first day of the second month following the imposition of the delay. I just wanna make sure that this is what's intended. That means after one month, after one month, the first day following one month-
Yes.
Is what you intend. So like on the thirty-first day-
Yes.
Following a thirty-day month. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just want, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that's-
We'd like to get the process going so that they're engaged right away rather than waiting two months after the, after the initial application.
Yep, understood. It was a clarification point and it makes total sense, so, okay.
Now, this, uh, on that same, that same change or modification that you're proposing, it has been noted at the FinCom meeting, and I would agree with the assessment, is that it is very nebulous what bimonthly means. Whether it means every other month or it means twice a month. So you may wanna change bimonthly into something that is more specific, that no one can misconstrue what that means. So you may wanna put on it, every other month. Or every second month after, starting with the first day of blah, blah, blah. So again, we can ask town council to, but bimonthly isn't, is, is not a clear term.
If I could address that, actually, I did, I don't even know where I heard that. What was I watching that I heard that?
On the FinCom?
Yeah, that's right, okay. It's when you start forgetting what you're watching. I have never understood bimonthly to mean twice a month. Semi-monthly means twice a month.
No, semi-monthly would mean every two weeks.
That's right. Semi-monthly means twice a month.
Yeah, right, but that's just two terms of the same thing.
No, 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 bimonthly means a couplet of months.
Alright. I thought it made a good term, but that's okay.
It might mean two different things. I receive bimonthly periodicals, so I get them every two months.
Right.
Yeah, I thought it was a defined term, bimonthly.
Cause I specifically remember yelling at the monitor when I was watching it, so.
That was huge.
You are a lawyer, so I trust you.
Anyway, just a note, I mean, it's a minor note. I too am very pleased, and I think that the change that you made in, uh, in number three with the delay of the day is gonna have much more effect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was definitely, yeah.
It says, twice a month or every two months?
There you go.
What does it say?
Twice a month or every two months.
Okay, yeah, yes, good. No, twice a month? What, really?
Leaning back like you're, good, yeah, it says exactly what I said it said. Which is, it's nebulous. It's very unclear.
You're gonna put all these lawyers out of business. Just leave it all confusing so they can figure it out.
Another hundred dollars out of this?
I get paid whether I wanna lose.
Wow.
Yeah, there you go.
Boy, that is really a contour, you know what probably happened there? That probably the same thing that happened there, it's probably the same thing that happened that where Marion Webster finally recognized irregardless as a word. That's what happened there. Because-
Alright, we're not, now we're here. Okay, so I'm fine, is anybody, I don't think that we have to vote on this. I think we've, well, maybe we do wanna vote to make sure it's in the, it's in the warrant. Does anybody have any objections to this being in the warrant and having the people vote? I'm fine with the people voting on this personally. I actually, will actually support it, so.
No objection.
Do we need a vote? Should we have a vote?
Sure.
Doesn't hurt.
That's, I would entertain a motion regarding the proposed modification to the demo delay bylaw as presented by the Historical Commission.
So moved?
Again.
Oh, sorry.
Start with, I move that, so we know.
Yes, yes, uh, uh-
And paid by the all-time.
So I, I, I move to accept, to approve the inclusion of this bylaw as amended.
Thank you. Second. Alright, all who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. Okay.
So the town manager, you're going to check with town council on that? And then we'll tidy up those few words and then resubmit it to you.
Yes, that sounds great. Yeah, I think there's no reason for you to go back to them. I think the town manager can wordsmith those last, there's no, there's no change in intent now that we know what your intent is.
Right, excellent. Good, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, eight P M.
If I might, my public apology to the person that brought that up at the FinCom, I stand corrected.
Oh, boy. I'm glad we don't have any bi-weekly meetings then.
I'm not sure.
Eight P M, request of Randy Moulton to bow hunt on six seventy-one West Street parcel. Please, please come to the microphone and introduce yourself and your address and then we can-
Good evening, my name's Randy Moulton. You want my home address?
Yes, please.
One fifty-seven Wilder Road, it's in La Mesa, Mass.
Okay.
I'm requesting permission to archery hunt on six seventy-one West Street in Lunenburg. It's a sixty-seven acre parcel of mostly swamp, some woods. It's a very specific area that I would target just a few times during the hunting season. And it's, uh, it meets all the requirements as far as seventy-five yards away from a road, a hundred and seventy yards away from any dwelling. Um, it, it's plenty big enough as from the research I've done and the scouting that I've done of the area.
I will open up to the board.
Mr. Chair, may we be hunting, do you intend to hunt from a tree stand?
Um, no, mostly from the ground. I don't, I don't use tree stands.
Sure. I'm not gonna support this passing today, but I wanna explain to you why. So I generally am very much so in support of hunting.
Yes, sir.
And bow hunting, hunting with rifles. Um, and I think it's a normal part of our life. I think it's a normal part of our heritage.
Yes, sir.
So I, I don't hold any reservations about hunting. In fact, I think that in previous votes, I have, have always, I think, supported everyone's request to hunt. So I'm not gonna support this one. Uh, I think that this area, so this is a parcel of town land that we don't actually have any rules for.
Okay.
We don't have a set purpose for. Uh, so it's kind of being used by residents casually for, you know, passive recreation. Uh, it's being used by, I believe, farming community to farm, you know, to bale some of the fields there. So it kinda has this open community use right now with no real set guidelines on how it should be used. And I don't think that we would be able to realistically inform the public that the activity is happening.
Okay.
So if it was land that we had a way of notifying others and if it didn't have so many a butters as this land does, as you looked at that map, you see how many small parcels are all around this. I have no concerns about a bow errantly running into someone's house. Uh, you know, zero. My concern is, again, that we will not be able to effectively communicate to all the people who use the land that the activity is occurring.
I understand.
Alright.
I would ask the question, um, do we have, uh, I'm not gonna get the terminology correct, but I was under the impression that, um, Lunenburg Town Land was open to archery only?
No, that's only those parcels under the care of the conservation-
Conservation, okay.
To which is, if I may add, to which is what my objection would be, is that I don't see any compelling reason to open. Beside that I agree with what Mr. Jeffrey said, I would add one additional piece, which is we have plenty, plenty of conservation land that's open by right-
I understand.
-to archery and I don't see the need to open up another parcel, another sixty-seven acres when we have literally hundreds of acres that are available.
By right.
I understand. And I do take advantage of other parcels that are open to conservation, so I, I respect that.
We have other members, though.
Yeah, I'll, I'll open it up if anybody has any questions or comments of their own.
I also will add, it's, it is very specific, um, on that parcel, the sixty-seven acres is not, there's, there's no, um, fields. It's all either wooded or swamped and it's, it is directly the edge of the swamp that I would be focusing on. So that, as far as the trails going through it, I would be well away from all those areas, so.
Fair enough. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
So you are aware that bow hunting's allowed on all conservation lands according to your policies?
Yes, sir.
You're aware of that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I personally have no objection to the request.
I came prepared to support, to say it was okay as well, but I, I understand Mr. Jeffrey's points, and now I'm in the same, on the same page, so I will not support it.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no other questions, and I will entertain a motion, any motion, that addresses the request by Mr. Moulton to bow hunt on 671 West Street Parcel.
I move to deny the request from Mr. Moulton to bow hunt on 671 West Street.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three to two, it passes, so the request is denied.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignation. So we have an APDC resident representative, term to expire June 30th, 2024, Laura McGrath at 22 Cushing Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, just introduce yourself, even though I've already given your name and address. I take all that thunder.
My name is Laura McGrath. I reside at 22 Cushing Lane, Lunenburg, Mass.
And I'll start out the way I started out all. So tell us why you want to be a member of the Architectural Preservation District Commission.
Okay, so I am a middle school social studies teacher. I've been teaching in a neighboring community for over 35 years. I teach in Lamonster. And so I believe in preserving the past as a way to protect our history for the future. I also, during COVID, was, was watching, involved, you know, watching, standing by as the APDC meetings were taking place. And I felt oftentimes that I wanted to say something. And because I missed public comments, I could not speak. And I just think that, that I probably have quite a bit that I could say and share and contribute to the commu, to the committee, and would like the opportunity to be able to sit at the table and, and share my thoughts and my ideas and be an active participant in the committee. You know, I have, yeah, so that would be it. And also, as I watch the SLUG Board meetings, every month you talk about how the committee needs two, two more members. So I kind of figured that it might be time to, you know, break out and participate in a community, committee, which I have not done prior to this, you know.
Anything.
Now, anything, yeah, in Lunenburg. So now I'm an empty nester, and I spend too much time trying to, you know, communicate with my adult children and spend too much time probably with my schoolchildren. So this would be a nice opportunity for me to do something a little bit different after all this time.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up to the board.
Any questions?
So you want to stop texting, texting and get down to business?
Pardon me?
So you want to stop texting and get down to business, right?
Yeah, I guess.
I would just say that the only thing that, I guess, you know, this isn't a personal thing at all, because I...
Right.
Your husband shows a great degree of integrity every time he presents himself.
Right.
Publicly, and you seem to as well.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I haven't, there's like no hidden agenda.
No, I'm sure there isn't, but I, I, I always worry about nepotism thing, you know, the, you know, the husband and wife on the same committee. That's just something I'm always concerned about.
Okay.
You know, we tried to shy away from that in law enforcement from obvious reasons.
Okay.
So that, that, that's my only concern. Has nothing to do with you or Ms. McGrath at all, at all. Absolutely not.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I don't think we have a lot of candidates beating down our door to join the APDC, so I, I welcome any volunteers, and I, I think you'd be a fine candidate.
Well, I was gonna say, part, you know, part of it is that during the time of COVID, when the meetings were Zoom, there were only three members, and sometimes if somebody wasn't able to make it, then they didn't have a quorum. And I would think to myself, I could make the quorum, you know, I could give you the quorum that you need. I, you know, sometimes go to the meetings and sit on the sideline, and I see Colin taking down the minutes of the meeting and stuff, and I think that's definitely something that, you know, that I can do in a way that I can contribute to kind of alleviate all of the work that the three men are doing, as well as be able to speak when I want to speak. And anyone who knows me knows that it's very difficult for me to not ask questions and to refrain from making comments when I see fit, but, or when I want to. But, but I do, I do appreciate that, that concern that you have. But like I said, there's, there's absolutely no hidden agenda. And anyone who knows my husband, and I know that if opposites attract, then we're the epitome of that. So that, you know, I definitely speak my mind, and I'm certainly anything but a puppet, so.
First of all, thank you for stepping forward. There, there is a dearth of volunteers in town, so I always appreciate when people stand up to do this. Unfortunately, I, I serve on a board of trustees for a private school, and I am the chair on that board of something called the Governance Committee, which is the committee that gets to decide who gets to be trustees and who doesn't. And we have a strict rule against people from the same household spouses, et cetera, being two, two members like that serving on the board or any committee of the board. And I am so supportive of the rationale for that, that I, I think you'd be a stellar candidate otherwise. I, that is going to be my hangup here, and for that reason and that reason only, I, it's not just what goes on in the dynamic of your own household, it's also the precedent. So even if you disagree on issues or you see things different ways, it's the precedent that we send out to the public that, well, you let them do it, so why can't we do it? So that's my concern, but I, I, it pains me to, to, to go the way I'm going, because I think you'd be a great candidate, but I just, for that reason, can't, can't do it.
Sure, I respect that.
Yeah, so I've seen you walk by the camera in some APDC meetings.
Yeah.
So it's a nice, it's a pleasure to actually meet you. And as you know, we've been in touch with your, with Mr. McGrath quite a bit. So I, I've said in a previous meeting, I don't know, probably two years ago, the same thing that two of my fellow colleagues are saying here tonight, that I generally am opposed to members of the same household serving on the same committee. And it has nothing to do with qualifications. You certainly seem like you are an excellent candidate. I think that my concern is about perception and what happens on the other end of the table when you have multiple names that are similar and how that reads.
Okay.
And, and beyond that, it's also, I think, you know, on the applicant side, it's, it's the perception of fairness, that while I don't think that there's anything that you or, or your other half, that there's any indication that anything that you would do would ever be unfair, I think that we have to be concerned about perception as well. And I think that there's a perception concern that I have, and that's why I've consistently been opposed to members of the same household, not, I mean, sisters, brothers, you know, anyone serving together on the same committee.
Sure.
So I apologize for that, because I understand that, the implications of that, but...
Okay.
But I do appreciate you stepping forward.
All right. Well, thank you.
I, I too, I mean, I actually have a long history of, there have been times when, when people of the same household spouses or otherwise have come before me, and I, I never support them out of the same principles that were spoken.
All right.
Previous. What I would, what I, now, that's being said.
Yes.
I don't want to lose a volunteer, okay?
Yeah.
There are a lot of other committees that need people, that we need people. I'm hoping, okay, this is my hope, is that of those, there is something in there that engages you in at least a similar way, maybe not to the same level, but to some similar way, that we can use your enthusiasm and your wanting to be involved in town. And one of the other things that, what do we have?
Something similar, maybe Economic Development Committee, there's a position on the Green Communities Committee, one associate vacancy in the Zoning Board of Appeals, Personnel Committee, Commissioner of Trust Funds, and those are all the openings right now.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that, to, because I, again, it is, somebody said, I think it pains them. It is a very hard decision for me to make, but I think because of precedent and because of principle, I think I would have to not be in favor of your placement on this because of the current membership.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm hoping, and that's all I can do in this case, that you might be interested in one of the other things. Do not offer this kind of conflict, that we can still use your energies in wanting to help the town in some way.
Okay. I will check out the list and get back to you.
Please do.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chair, one other comment I'd like to make, Mrs. McGrath, just in the, in the interest of disclosure, too, I would tell you that my oldest son is a combat vet. He was a Marine Corps sniper, and when he cycled out of the Marine Corps, he came to me when I was the police chief and asked me if he could get a job as a police officer. And I had to say no.
Right.
And I discouraged him. And then my youngest son, he too came to me and asked me if he could become a police officer, and I had to say no. However, he got appointed on the police department after I retired.
Right.
And I just want you to know that, you know, we were pretty strict about that sort of thing. I don't want you to think I'm some kind of...
Sure. No, 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 and I, you know, I, well, I see in the schools, but, you know, usually it's like if somebody becomes a principal, then their spouse would go teach in a different building or something like that. So, you know, yeah, so I...
Yeah, and I too would like to thank you, I mean, a lot for stepping up. And I know, and you'd be very valuable to the town, believe me. And I really encourage you, too, to maybe seek a position on one or the other.
Sure. I know, I will, I'll look into them.
I would, yeah, we would appreciate that, believe me, because I know you'd be an asset to the town.
Thank you.
And I want you to go away from this, absolutely knowing, and I, I think you do.
Yes.
That none of this is, it's not a personal decision.
Absolutely.
It's not any, any mark on you that we can't trust you with, in this, it's really so much just on principle and precedent.
Sure, absolutely. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Do we need to take a formal vote on this?
I hope not.
I don't, I don't think so. Town manager report.
I'll start by listing the vacancies. There are two vacancies on Architectural Preservation District Commission, two vacancies on the Commissioner of Trust Funds, multiple vacancies on the Economic Development Committee, one regular member vacancy and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacancy in the Personnel Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in serving on any of those boards can submit a application form that can be found on the town website and submit completed forms to the SLUG Board's office. Current employment opportunities with the town, there are currently postings for the Assistant Accountant Position, which is a part-time benefited position, a Board Committee Clerk, which is a part-time non-benefited position, a Digital Services Staff Librarian, which is a part-time benefited position, Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, which is a part-time position, that they're seeking to make a benefited position at the special town meeting, Trash and Recycling Coordinator, which is a grant-funded, part-time, non-benefited position. More information can be found on the website under Employment Opportunities. I have a long legislative update. So I recently reached out to Senator Cronin, Representative Kusmerik, and Representative Sina regarding a number of questions that we've broadly discussed, including any pending bills that would affect host community agreements, property tax relief legislation for seniors, any possible legislation that would impact formula funding changes related to Chapter 70 and Chapter 90, the state, the status of the state supplemental budget bill, the state's plan for ARPA funding, and the status of the bond bills that have been, have earmarked funds for Lunenburg. We had a Zoom call last week, and they provided the following updates. They confirmed that any bills on host community agreements will not be acted on this fiscal year, nor is there any impetus to move any forward. Senator Cronin was not aware of any bills that would adopt tax relief for seniors and did not believe the Senate had any appetite to act on such bills. The House has two bills that Representative Sina co-sponsored, but they are not moving forward at this time. The legislators did not foresee any changes to the funding formulas for Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 this fiscal year, but Senator Cronin did note that, did expect Chapter 90 funding formula bill in the future. The Votes Act passed in the Senate, and the House is expected to take action on this during this session. The legislators should have received the represincting maps this past Friday, and will have 21 days to review those. At the time of speaking with them, they did not know if there would be any changes to Lunenburg. To be on the state supplemental budget bill will occur before November 17th, as formal session ends on the state and resumes in January. Realistically, when requesting earmarks, we should ask for projects that are between $10,000 and $50,000, given that we have a freshman delegation that plays a part into it. And I will ask and work with the chair about an upcoming agenda item to provide my recommendations for earmarks to request in the supplemental budget bill. The state is currently in the process of holding hearings on the use of ARPA funds, but are also in a holding pattern, waiting for the federal government, their infrastructure bill. So there's no duplication of efforts, and they maximize any opportunities for funding with use of those funds. The, I also plan on putting together projects that are high priority to the town, such as the Flat Hill Culvert project, to submit to the legislature as they are formulating on how best to use state ARPA funds. In regards to the three bond bills that projects for Lunenburg were included in, the legislators were upfront that we will never see that funding. Not only do we have a freshman delegation, but there have been zero projects for small towns that funding in bond bills have been released. I plan to extract the projects that were included in these bond bills that have not been completed and add them to our list of budget priorities that will be up for discussion if they are not already. The Senate will be taking up a mental health omnibus bill between now and November 17th. This bill addresses mental health insurance reform and is not an appropriation bill. And the delegation has been invited to an upcoming meeting in November to meet with the board, and once I hear back, I will let everyone know, announce that date. Any questions on that?
Just a comment, it, it's nice, it's actually a little bit refreshing that the, that the delegation was upfront about the bond bills, because there's always this, there's always this stir that, well, we're in the bond bill, we're in the bond bill, and if they don't get funded at the outset, they ain't going to get funded. And to have three people in the delegation say very honestly, you're never going to see that money, helps us plan for what we're going to do next, and we don't hold out any hope.
And I've asked them, when they do come to the public meeting, for them to state that in person as well. Budget updates. The Finance Director submitted the fiscal '21 balance sheet to DOR last week, and free cash was certified on Friday, October 8th. The general fund free cash was certified at $2,666,962. The Water Enterprise retained earnings was certified at $54,544. at $2,666,962. The Water Enterprise retained earnings was certified at $54,544. The Solid Waste Enterprise retained earnings was certified at $49,413. And the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings was certified at $1,828,706. And the Peg Access Enterprise retained earnings was certified at $835,969. COVID-19 update. The weekly update from the Board of Health on the total number of cases reported as of October 2nd was 80. The current positivity rate for Lunenburg as of October 2nd was 6.94%. Uh, just note on this, I spoke to, um, the Board Health Today agent about how we can promote education on this, as Lunenburg seems to be an outlier compared to other communities in Massachusetts. Um, and it's really hard to determine why, given we have higher levels of vaccination, uh, rates. But, um, we spoke, and I offered a suggestion of putting in the Special Town Meeting warrants, an informational page that we can send out, and, um, Mr. Graffy is going to provide that for us by the deadline.
Thank you.
I think in what I saw today from the Board of Health, our 6.94% positivity rate is double what it is, more than double what it is in Worcester, and it's almost five times what it is in the state. So it's not a smidge higher. It's like really a large factor higher, so.
Do we know how many people are getting tested? Like, how many people were tested to generate this number? Do we have that?
I'm sure the state's dashboard has the, all the breakdown on that.
Okay.
That's, yeah, not data that the Board of Health provided to me.
Did you want to do your meetings and events?
Yes. Meetings, events, and other announcements. Halloween trick-or-treat hours will be Sunday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the Fall Special Town Meeting will be Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. at the Middle School, High School Auditorium. I just also want to read, um, two, uh, letters that we received, just to acknowledge departments, um, that these letters were about. Um, the, this email was directed to the DPW Director, and I was CC'd on it. "Mr. Oliver, I am a relatively new resident in the town of Lunenburg, having moved into a new home on Valley Road in June 2020. I want to acknowledge your department's prompt response to my recent request to have the brush cut back on Gilchrist and Valley Road. My spouse and I walk daily on these roads, and removing the vegetation has made our exercising safer and more enjoyable to do. I also want to say that the road conditions in Lunenburg surpass those of adjacent communities. You've done a fantastic job of providing smooth, pothole-free roads throughout the town. I don't see a need, I don't need to see the boundary signs announcing that I am entering or leaving Lunenburg. The road conditions say it all. I have copied the Town Manager on this email, so she is aware of your good work. By the way of this email, I also want her to know that your department could use a bigger brush mower. Having served as a park commissioner in Green County, Ohio, I am very familiar with the brush mowers, as we had an extensive, uh, we had an extensive rails-to-trails network. Keeping vegetation under control on those paved trails was never-ending task, which dictated a large piece of equipment. Given Lunenburg's rural scenery setting, it seems to me that it would make your department more efficient if it had a bigger mower. I know that budgets are always tight, but hopefully the town could plan to get this equipment sometime in the next couple of years." And that's from Tony Skulclembreen at Five Valley Road. Skulclembreen?
Yeah, Skulclembreen.
Skulclembreen. So, just want to acknowledge that, um, DPW, uh, and their hard work. This, um, we received today, and it was addressed to the members of the Select Board, and I won't, um, uh, due to privacy concerns, I won't, uh, say the person's name. "I just want to let you know that the ambulance crew I worked with on Friday morning, October 8th, were absolutely wonderful. They transported me to the Nishoba Valley Medical Center. We only, uh, need remember where, um, I'll skip over Craig from Lunenburg and Daniel from Leominster, the paramedics. The whole team was so professional and kind. They were gentle and compassionate. I felt so safe under their care. They got here to my home in record time. I couldn't believe how quickly they responded. We and, we and Lunenburg are so fortunate to have such a wonderful crew. I just felt I wanted you to know that I had such a great experience at such a stressful and difficult time. Even one of Lunenburg's policemen was here in exact 30 seconds. He was at the side of the road by a property and heard the ambulance call and came to the door immediately. That was a really quick response." So, just want to thank both of those departments as well.
And to that, to that writer, I want to say, yes, I believe, I agree with you. We are lucky, having, you know, the, the services of the both Public Safety Departments and the DPW and all the people in town. I think, you know, there's, a lot of times we gloss over it, but I will take this opportunity that you read these letters, that I think we have an excellent group of people who work for the town. And, uh, it's nice to hear that other people, through various means, letters, posts, et cetera, think the same thing. So, I appreciate their correspondences.
I think they need a raise.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Any other questions for the Town Manager?
I just had a comment. I mean, I think we've touched on this point before, with regard to that COVID positivity rate. I mean, we don't really know what's driving this in our, in the comparative towns. Like, for example, if you look at Worcester, we don't know if they're just administering on a regular basis a huge number of tests, uh, and they're coming out negative, which, you know, so their denominator in that fraction, positives over how many tests are administered, their denominator in that fraction is going to be huge, and it's going to make that percentage positivity rate look very small. Whereas, maybe people in Lunenburg are only getting tested if they suspect they have it.
So, so first of all, I have to acknowledge that your analysis is correct, right? That is certainly a possibility. I would also say that the positivity rate hasn't always been that high. So, they're judging the same, all the, all the municipalities the same way, and they have been doing it pretty much the same way since they established the criteria, which is well over a year ago, and we haven't been always at that rate. So, while I acknowledge that that may be a possibility, that maybe our testing has really waned, um, I think it's at least a good precaution to bring people aware of it. I mean, if everybody individually says, hey, I take the precautions I need to, and they hear the message, and they, they say, we're doing what we can, then fine, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want people to know that the state has it flagged as, as a high positivity rate.
Sure.
Yep, no.
Okay, uh, old business.
Mr. Chair, before I move on, can I, can I just make one comment regarding the, uh, candidate for the APDC?
Sure.
So, everyone was here and, and said they, and I understand that they're, don't want to set a precedent for nepotism and all that. And one of, one of the comments I, I got via text was, we already have that precedent in town. We have a board member, the Council on Aging, with a married couple on there, and the sky hasn't fallen, and, and, you know, uh, by all accounts, they all do a great job, and one of them was reappointed this year with no objection. So, I guess I'm a little puzzled why, when we have a volunteer like that on a committee that is, you know, why we'd eject now. So, that's all. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Is that a discussion, or is that just a comment?
It's a comment. Obviously, he said it's a comment. If you want to comment back.
Yep.
Feel free.
Yeah, I, I, I think the Council of Aging is, is a little different, because I, I think that board has like 12 people on it, or something to that nature. But generally, I, you know, I think I've been pretty consistent in, in, in my perspective on it, but I do understand what you're saying. Uh, I think that there, there can be special occasions in which exceptions need to be made on a 12-sill-member board, but I think that my pers, you know, Council of Aging isn't making decisions about people's homes that's going to cost them any money. I mean, it's, it's about providing a service to the community. And so, on a board that has authority to make decisions that impact people, I, you know, I, I would make perhaps a distinction there. That advisory boards or, or boards that don't, um, regulate, you know, that the impact is not there. But I understand what you're saying.
Old business. Discussion, uh, the FY22 Select Board goal on the primary school property and the timeline for request for demolition. So, I, uh, at last week's meeting, I told the board that, in a separate email from the Chair of the, um, APDC, that it was noted that the commission had decided, or had come to a consensus, that they didn't think that a compromise of part of the building being kept as part of the overall design of whatever's proposed at the old primary school was going to be sufficient. And I was asked by this board to make sure that, was that the, his own opinion, or was it the, the position of the commission? I did forward his response to everybody. You saw that it was the commission's, uh, consensus.
Mm-hmm.
He didn't say unanimous, but, uh, so I don't know that it is unanimous or not, but it's certainly the consensus of, of his commission, that anything short of rehabilitation or sale, or something of that nature, that, that, the idea that we, that we presented or that we offered, that we could investigate of keeping a fragment of the building or part of the building as, uh, a memorial to the building itself without tearing the entire thing down, that that wasn't going to be something they could vote positively about. So, I just wanted to present that piece of the information that was asked last week. So, everybody's had a chance to think about this, about what we want to do. The, I guess the request is that, do we want to propose submitting this now, or what are the pros and cons of submitting it now or not now? Let's all open up the floor to anybody who wants to offer.
I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't submit it now. Unless we can come up with an argument why we should wait.
I concur. Um, I, I think it's, I mean, I, I understand what they're doing, I guess. That's the way they're interpreting their charge, but I really wish there could have been some sort of compromise, uh, uh, vision, but if it's, if it's, we're going to deal in complete binary, and it's, um, total refurbishment and restoration of the building or demolition, I, I say, let's submit the demolition request.
I'm in favor of submitting the demolition request as soon as possible. If we have the application here tonight, I'll fill it out.
I'm in the same boat as Mike Ray, completely.
Okay. I, I concur with all of you. I think it's a unanimous decision. I will say that I am going to, uh, because we have the, the RFP responses, that when we get to the point of whoever we hire, I am going to invite them, uh, not to lose the opportunity of them to change their mind, but I think that it is, at this point, I think it is prudent that we go ahead and, and at least begin the process. And whether it gets approved or denied, we can make what decision we want to do at that time, but at least we should start the process. So we should look at what we need to do to fill, to start that process.
I think it's just a form.
Okay.
But, um, but it's, you're going to take a vote on this, or?
Yes, we can take a vote. So.
I did have one question, if I could, first.
Yeah.
Nothing, it, just because they don't approve, I mean, nothing precludes our, uh, you know, just because they, uh, didn't, um, we're submitting this demolition request.
Yep.
And it's an all or nothing thing. Nothing precludes, in the future, some plan that.
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
Correct. No, no, that's absolutely not. We're, we're not shutting a door.
Yeah.
We're basically starting a process that everybody sees, at some level, is going to involve the, the partial or complete, or complete demolition of that building.
Yes.
So, either way, if we were to propose something, even if they were amenable to it, we'd still have to propose demolishing some of the building. So.
Yes.
I think we can get that moving forward.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion regarding the submission of the, uh, request for demolition of the building at the, uh, known as the old primary school, on School Street.
Yeah, I move for the Select Board to submit a request for demolition of the old primary school, uh, within the next, uh, 15 days.
Second.
Whoever. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, discussion on the November 16th Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles. So what do we have to, first of all, what, what is waiting for us on this?
All right, I have.
The draft article. So what, let's go down the list here in the.
Is it possible, Town Manager, to, uh, share this with those at home? I got a comment last week that they, someone at home couldn't follow along.
Okay. The warrant itself?
Yes.
The draft warrant, yes. And next week, we're going to take, uh, that's the last meeting we have before printing, right? So, next week.
Yes.
Vote. Be prepared, we're not going to do it tonight, but be prepared to vote on recommendations next week. They're going to be able to show this on PAC?
Yep. The chart on the side.
Okay. All right, so A, let's just go through them, you know, and whatever we need to discuss. The, the A is FY22 budget, right?
Yes.
So there's nothing for us to talk about here. We know there's going to be numbers.
I did provide a draft tonight, um, and it's still, um, I'd like to review it with the Finance Director tomorrow, but it's preliminary draft on.
Is there something you want to share with us tonight to review, or do you want to wait till next week?
It is in the Google Drive, I think. Oops. Yeah, it says chart of changes.
Okay, so they're saying that, but what is it? In, chart of changes. Okay. So, Article, Draft Article A, we have budget adjustments in draft format in our Google Drive called Chart of Changes.
I lost my draft. Hold on a second. So Article A, um, will include the additional funds needed for the Assistant Town Accountant Position, um, and that's $4,912. The Technology Department, um, will need additional costs to cover the software and equipment upgrades that the grant is not received. Um, and the cost, uh, it's a minimal cost for the consultant for the remainder of the year. That total is $65,352. And, uh, our Medicare account, um, we have, the last couple of years, had to do, uh, transfers at the end of year, end of the year from the group health insurance, so being proactive, uh, that, once that brought, was brought to my attention, um, that amount, or estimating, the $39,935. And so there's, would be a transfer from the group health insurance count to cover, um, $78,500 out of those cost, and the remainder would be, uh, covered by reason appropriation. Article II, the prior year expense is $7,519.70.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah, there are prior year bills from the Technology Department that were not known.
That's a high number for prior year bills.
Yes.
Usually it's in the hundreds, not the thousands.
They were, uh, recently brought to the attention of the Finance Director.
Okay.
So, they were not, um, known at the time, or encumbrances could have been made.
Yeah, prior year bills are what, nine tenths? We have to have a vote on it.
Yes. And the rest of the adjustments just show the changes in the state assessments, and the cherry sheet, the new growth, uh, and the Sewer Enterprise, both on the expenditure side and the revenue side, the changes in their. side, the changes in their budget that will be under separate articles.
I'm really glad we brought up that 20 cents from the annual town meeting revenue surplus.
Yes.
Put us over the top.
All right, and.
All right, so we'll vote on that next week because this is a draft.
Yes.
So anyway, this is the preview of, this is the trailer for next week.
Yes.
Okay.
Article D, the estimated amount, the impact to that overlay is $7,500, and after talking with the Finance Director, she does not believe that the overlay amount that we put in the budget needs to be increased, so there's no budgetary impact.
Okay. Then there's the easement on Lomister Shirley Road, which is the Lunenburg Central, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. Who's, who's, did the Select Board submit that?
Yes, that would, that will say Select Board.
Okay, then we have Sewer Commission, that's raise appropriate borrow or transfer.
Yes. Article F is to amend their budget to, for additional hours and to make the position benefited for the Assistant, the Sewer Business Manager.
Okay. The yet-to-be advertiser filled position? Or do we have some?
It's advertised at the current, was currently approved budget, not at what we are asking for town meeting at the special. And Article G is their annual article that they put money into the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund.
Okay. H is what we just reviewed with the Historical Commission already this evening?
Yes.
I is the Salary Admin Plan.
Yep, these are positions that were approved by the Personnel Committee already to be incorporated into the Comp and Class Plan, and so this is memorializing it in the town meeting vote.
J is the first of the three TC Building Design, TCP Building Design Committee. This one is to basically hear an interim report. K is about a debt exclusion article regarding the renovation of the building as determined by the TCP Building Design Committee and their study with the Architects and Engineers last year. I.
I was just going to add that the Finance Committee added, asked for specific information on that related to the debt schedule and impact.
Yep.
So that will be presented on Thursday evening.
Right.
If available prior to that, send it prior.
So just to preempt my committee report, I attended the, or remotely attended, Finance Committee on last Thursday when they got to this, and they, like everybody else, said that clearly K and L are linked, and it was discussed whether, again, there's enough information coming from the new study that was added in the special, on the annual town meeting, to look at what new construction would be, to even make a determination that K, it was pointed out, could have been on the annual town meeting. There was no reason why it couldn't have been on, but we wanted to delay it because we wanted to have people have access to numbers of what it would cost. Now, my understanding, and Mr. Jeffries is a member of the committee, my understanding from the Finance Committee discussion was that the TCP Building Design Committee got word from the engineers that they're not going to have a number until November. If that's true, then that will give us not six weeks, it will give us a week and a half or two weeks to discuss something that's brand new. And so, again, I would reiterate my objection to this on this, that there's just not going to be any time to talk about this and come up with any reasonable comparison. And if the, if the safety valve that some of the members of this board said we could do a town meeting, I'd say why do we want to have the Finance Committee spend time on this, have people prepare for this if we're going to get there potentially not have enough information they're going to pass, vote to pass over it? So.
So, I mean, I have a couple of thoughts. First is, I don't know if it's helpful to relitigate things that we've already voted four to one for, but when it comes to K, you know, we already have, which is what we're talking about, right? K already has a dollar amount. And let me rephrase that. K, K has a dollar amount that we were able, K is an article to fund a rehabilitation of the TC Passios. We have that dollar amount in the spring, that dollar amount hasn't changed to now. So that's accurate for K. Now, when it comes to L, L is not looking to fund a new building. L is looking for funds to get construction documents. So I would, I would clarify that we already have the number that they're looking for for K, and we have an estimate roughly of what L's going to cost. We're plugging in $250,000 as a working number, but that's what we're looking for. Now, when it comes to the cost of the building project, I don't fully understand why a new build would be vetted by the Finance Committee if that's not being proposed to the town. That I would think that what the Finance Committee would concern themselves with is the financial impact of what's actually in front of the town, which is funding for construction documents. That there is going to be a conversation that needs to be had, and I'm not going to say that the Finance Committee is not fair in wanting to have additional information, but I think that my expectation is that we'll hear a report from the Finance Committee on the impact of $250,000 from free cash to fund this, not the impact of a $23 million building project that may come in the springtime.
Well, first of all, to point number one about relitigating, there is the ability to always, you know, reconsider any decision that's made. So it's not inappropriate to even offer the idea that we could possibly reconsider. B, to your last point about the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee is going to be asked to provide town meeting with a recommendation on an article of not only some monetary value, but a high monetary value in the terms of $23 million. And one of the pieces that's going to be part of that is the discussion at the annual town meeting, that we want to know what it's going to cost to do something similar of this, similar footprint of new construction, a number that's still not known and won't be known until two weeks before. That means there'll be zero time to discuss this. So unless people want to have a very, very lengthy discussion of a warrant, a warrant that has 20, some, almost 20 articles, I just don't think town meeting is a time to have those discussions. I may still be in the minority. Just offering that as a point of reference, that when we met and we heard from the TC Building Design Committee last week, they said they'd have it to us. I said, even if you gave it to us now, it was going to be six weeks. And they said, no, it's in a couple of weeks. Now, it's not going to be till beginning of November.
Well, to clarify that, so since I haven't given that committee report, so what we discussed with the architects was that we have a 60-day contract that's with them, and the expectation is that all the information would be completed within 60 days. Now, there was a lengthy negotiation process, that contract was not signed until, I believe it was the beginning of September, end of, end of August. And so our 60 days is coming up somewhere around the end of October. So the commitment that we have from the architects is that we should expect to get a number from them between the 27th of October for discussion at our November 3rd meeting, which is on Wednesday. So, I mean, I know it's half of one and, you know, six of one, half the other, but, I mean, it's, it's, yes, it will come out, this number will come out toward the end of, toward the end of October. We should have it for discussion at our November 2nd meeting. And that is two weeks before town meeting, which is, you know, not without precedent.
One more piece to that. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, also a member of the TC Passios Committee. The other thing is also a member of Finance Committee. We've also, the Finance Committee has scheduled a tentative, no, an actual date for an additional public hearing on whatever that Thursday is, the first week of November, it's either the 3rd or 4th. So we, again, I agree, we're pushed up against, you know, the deadline way later than we were promised and everybody thought it was going to be a no-brainer, we'll have it in no time. I am very frustrated with that, too. I brought that information to this board and other boards that we'd have it, you know, with time to disseminate the information. So there will be, assuming the number comes out by the middle of that first week of November or earlier, the Finance Committee will have a public hearing on it that first week of November, and the TC Passios Committee will have another public forum the next week, and then town meeting is the week after that.
Again, I offer that, my goal, as I said, is to try to get something to come of this that we don't leave ourselves with no, with lots of no votes on things, and that's why I reiterate that. I can't bring it up for reconsideration because I was the one no vote. So in proper parliamentary terms, the only people who can offer to reconsider it is one of the people who voted in the majority.
I just want to add clarification to that, too. The additional information that the Finance Committee requested has to do with the debt schedules for the renovation project as well as Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
And what that looks like up against our debt policy.
Yeah.
And as well as the effect on the tax rate, what that would mean for residents.
I think that's a, that's a fair conversation. I mean, I've had a couple of discussions with a member of the Finance Committee, and I sincerely do understand, I think we all share, I'm saying this perhaps as part of L, but I think that we share a common goal, which is to move forward and in a way that we can get the most buy-in from the community to resolve the building situations that we're in. You know, I'm of the, of the belief that we had all the information for K in the springtime as well, and that the reason for delaying it was so that way we can give the residents of our town the number of a new build, so that way they can make an informed decision on whether or not to vote in favor of K. I mean, I'm not going to be voting in favor of K. I don't support a rehabilitation at this point, given that all indications are that a new building would cost around the same, and once we get that number, we'll be able to confirm it. But I did, in talking about L, I would like to propose some changes to this.
Well, hold on, so was everybody done with K? Okay.
So in speaking about L, so L is the article to, to secure funding for the design and engineering required to construct a new building. So I sent over some language, it's in our Google Drive, it's titled Article L, and it's an email. Now, when I sent the email, it did have some colors here to make it a little easier to read. On our version, it's black and white, so, which, what it looks like is some kind of lighter-looking font on the bottom bullet, so I'm not sure, Town Manager, if you want to share this with the all residents at home. So what, the first bullet depicts is what the current language is, and the second bullet depicts how, how the, excuse me, what the first bullet depicts is what I'm proposing, and what the second bullet depicts is the current language with all the modifications to get to how I'm proposing it. I have not asked Town Council to review this yet, I'm sure that when he does, that there will be probably some other additional minor changes. But I'm looking to accomplish a couple of things with these changes. So the first is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, inserting in $250,000 for the design and engineering required to construct a new building, and then this is where I inserted in Lunenburg Town Hall and Community Center, and the word "that," I modified consolidation to consolidates. Town offices and the rest of the wording here is the same, town offices, school uses, community space, the location, building and land, known as the TC Passios, located at 1025 Mass Ave, et cetera, et cetera. And then also on the verbiage of, and any and all incidental and related costs, including but not limited to site evaluation, engineering, final designs or services, and bid preparation for construction, or take any other action relative thereto. So what I'm hoping that these changes will accomplish are a couple of things. The first is to identify the new building and have a working name for it, of Lunenburg Town Hall and Community Center. So that's one, one goal. The second goal is to put, insert the dollar amount for that construction set of documents that we're looking to get, and then the other portion of this, adding in the language about bid preparation for construction. I would also like to offer with these changes that this Article L is being submitted by the Select Board, not the TCP Design Committee, and so for the warrant to reflect that, right now in our notes, it says submitted by TCP, but it's, it's being submitted by us. I also would offer, I've been working on what this presentation should look like at town meeting, and compiling, beginning the process of putting together that presentation. So I would ask for the board's agreement in a couple of weeks, once I give you guys a copy of that presentation, board's agreement to be able to present Article L to the town at town meeting. But I would like to talk about a, let me just keep going. I think that a presentation of this article needs to accomplish a couple of things. I think that we need to, to remind the community about the work that's been done to get to the point that we're at over the last 20 years, and especially since 2013. I think that we need to educate the public on what the building design process generally in municipal governments looks like, where we are at right now in that process, and then also to identify the needs that exist in our community and how this meets those needs going forward. And I, and also to, to leave open or to set the, a better expectation for what we intend to learn from this, namely being how, you know, in addition to having those concrete building costs, but to really go from an abstract, this is what our thought is, what do you think it will cost, and transferring that over to, and here are the building systems that we're going to be putting in, and this is what those building systems cost, and this is what the flooring material is going to be, and this is what the lighting is going to be, and really getting that level of detail, so that way when we get to the spring, we can have not just a educated estimate, but an actual cost that companies can, I'm sure we would get a few people to do it, but could review and then let us know what they would charge to provide those kinds of services. And then from that point, I think that's how we will be at a position come the springtime to be able to give the town all the information that they need to be able to make a decision on whether or not to move forward with constructing this new building. What concerns me is that if we do not set aside this funding now to do this, and we start this process in the springtime, that the building cost will be $500,000 more. And I don't see a real good reason why that's in our better interest.
Just so I am clear, the most important thing, well, there's lots of things to hear. First of all, as far as your request to present, I guess I'd love to see what you're going to present before you're going to, you know, I'd like to know before, as one member of the board, we vote and say, yeah, and let's see what you're going to present. So that's certainly open. Doesn't have to be determined until, you know, a little bit before town meeting. But the timeline you just said, so we are November 17th, so there's December, January, February, March, April, May, six months, exactly, well, a little less than six months. You feel that you can get an RFP out to get this together and have full bid documents and have a building designed in six months? I personally don't think there's a chance in the world that you can design a 55,000-square-foot building in six months.
So I would, what I would say in response to that is that at town meeting, that the community will, will get a presentation of what that design is going to be, that it's something that we've actually done in less than 60 days to get to this point, that, you know, what we said to the town was apples to apples, and to give a concept of how you can take the current programming space, repackage it in a new building, that that task alone has already been accomplished. So what we're talking about is taking that plan and getting the details of it ironed out. So the engineering aspect of it is what this is about. And that is a, in the, in the normal, you know, to remind folks at home, I am in the... I, I am in the, the property industry. I, you know, typically, an engineering process takes about two to four weeks. Now, it can take longer. It can become an elongated process, especially now. But generally speaking, it's a two-to-four-week process. Now, you're going to go through multiple steps. That's to get your initial engineering plan of what we think we can do. And then you're going to go through your value exercise, in which you're figuring out ways in which you can save money, and what are these opportunities. But that's the normal process. And yes, that is a reasonable goal within six months. And I think the intention is to continue to work with the design and engineering company that we've been working with.
Good. I will reiterate my opinion, not a chance in this world. But not, not with any, not with any community engagement, not with any communication to the public, not with input from the public. I ju, you know, again, just, just the RFP process alone is going to take six weeks, just that alone. That puts us well into the new year. By the time we get that approved, and we get, because we can't do anything with the money, because the articles would have to be approved by the state, right? Any funding?
No, not that.
Not this?
Not that.
Okay. So let's just say we're okay to go the next day. Still going to take a package to put together, and a time period of X around the holidays to get somebody to do it and to get started. So again, I, I don't even think, it's not even like pushing the envelope. I think it's beyond the envelope.
And then, I don't want to be snarky here, but that opinion is based on?
Multiple building, buildings that I've worked with in the town of primary build, public safety building, primary school building, high school building, library, and all those projects in some way or another on multiple committees that I've worked on. That was my experience.
So what's the alternative?
Well, I mean, I just, I want to set the expectations. Again, it's not about the article. I'm just, I'm, we're not going to have bid things for people to-
Okay, but the alternative is, the alternative is we do nothing, zero. Then six months goes by, then another year goes by. Just wait, at least we're moving forward with some kind of expectation. Whether or not we, it's realized, we're moving forward, doing something. That's the way I look at it.
Well, again, when you say we're doing something, you got to bring town meeting with you.
Well, that, that's our, I guess that's our job. That's your job to present it correctly. So then maybe we can get town meeting behind us. And if we all support that, then maybe it'll happen, the way I look at it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to weigh in just a-
Sure.
-few comments. One on Articles K and L, I agree they, they do go hand in hand. And based on, on the feedback we're getting from the TC Passios Committee, it appears that we're going to have numbers that allow us to, you know, make our evaluation of which one we want to support. In terms of keep, keeping Article L on the special town meeting warrant, I, I, I support that. I'd like to have the ability to, to move forward on that. But to your point on timeline, I completely agree that the timeline is, there's no way we're going to have construction-ready documents in six months. We'd be lucky to get, you know, construction-ready documents in 12 or 18 months. However, I do think allowing us to move forward, to Mr. Marino's point, i- is very valuable. And if we can make that decision and move the process forward, take that incremental step, so we can continue to make progress on that, I, I fully support it.
I will also bring out, just again, in my committee report, that the Finance Committee, some members of the Finance Committee had a problem by using free cash as a source in a special town meeting, which again, we talked about precedent earlier, many of these members, when we talked about somebody's candidacy for a committee. And the Finance Committee, there are some members who are not going to be on board with this. And again, they're going to be advising the town meeting attendees. So again, that's an obstacle that is an adversarial obstacle that we're putting in front of ourselves. I just want that to be clear, that the, the self-imposed deadlines are exactly that, self-imposed. There is no deadline that we are missing if we don't do these. So.
I, you know, I, I think that the town has many people with a lot of different ideas. And, and I think that what, what I appreciate about the process that we've gone through here is that we've really tried to incorporate as many ideas from the public as possible. So that way we get to a solution that people want. I mean, you know, the reality is, doing nothing is not an option. We are already using TCP as a community center. It has, it's a multi-use building that is, that, Tom, if you had to estimate how occupied it is as far as space goes, what is your estimate of occupied use with storage and, and actual use?
I would say 80%.
So we have a 55,000-square-foot building that is 80% occupied, that has a roof that is, that is in poor condition. And I think we made a very clear case at a previous town meeting that we can spend $9 million to have the same exact building with no changes other than improving what's already existing without any kind of modification in use. That, we know that, that we're already looking at that. I, I think that me and, and many other residents in town are of the opinion that it, it's time to make things happen. And I think that we're, you know, tripping over ourselves, you know, Mr. Joe Public and Mrs. Joe Public does not, does not frankly give a damn about if $250,000 coming from free cash or not. They just don't care about that. I think what Mr. Joe and Mrs. Joe Public want is they want to have a solution. And, and us tripping over ourselves and being scared of our own shadows because we are worried that a solution that's going to meet the needs of our community, maybe the tactics are, are too quick when it's been 20-something years, or 300, depending on your lens. I'm not trying to discount the perspectives of those on the Finance Committee. That, that membership provides a valuable service to our town and, and valuable recommendations to the voting population. What I'm saying is that I think that, that nonetheless, that those, those concerns will be overcome. You know, we haven't, these votes to move this project forward in some kind of way have not been close votes. I mean, these have not barely eked by. These have overwhelmingly passed. I think the town wants a solution. And, and this helps move in that direction. And what I have a hard time explaining is, what are, again, every six-month delay here is half a million dollars.
You're, you're coming up, you're, you're generating numbers, okay? There's no proof that every six months is $500,000.
So what, what we have is we have escalation costs that are from the professionals we've hired.
Yeah.
Who've, who've identified that we're looking at a roughly 4% a year escalation cost. You know, if we, if we take a $23 million total and we do 4% of that, you know, we're almost at a million bucks. Six months is half of that. That's half a million dollars. So it's not a made-up number. It's not something I'm pulling out of the air. It's a number that we've hired someone to give us, who is a professional, and that's the number they've given us. I mean-
That number is predicated on the fact that you have a plan, and you put it on the shelf, and you pull it out, and it's the same exact plan that may be, that may be applicable. But you're coming, you're comparing against something that isn't even designed yet, and then no one has agreed.
So-
That, that's the whole point. The whole point about the new building that we're looking, you're looking for funding for is no one has agreed in this town that we need 55,000 square feet. They have not agreed to that. They looked at, they approved the renovation look, or the renovation design plans because we already have the building envelope. So it made sense. But if somebody says you knock it down, nobody has agreed that we're going to build a 55,000-square-foot building. Maybe it'd be higher, maybe it'd be lower. You're, you're starting from scratch. So it's, it's not apples to apples when you talk about an escalation cost or an inflationary cost, because the design is not the same. And the things you're facing are not the same. That's all I'm saying.
Are you willing to entertain a motion? I, I mean, I, I think, Mr. Chair, that, that-
There's no motions. We're not agree, I mean, I, I'm fine with the language.
There's, I, I'm proposing changes to the language.
Yes. I'm, I'm fine with the changes to your language because they're necessary, right? The bill, the article can't go forward without an amount. And the other, the other changes you made are, are fine. They're, they're minor, you know, wording changes. The most important thing is the number, which by the way, is $15,000 lower than the number we, we appropriated to do the plan of the renovation, right?
Yes.
The renovation was 265. You're proposing, can we do this for 250? Does anybody know if that's a reasonable number?
We, we think the actual number's lower than this.
Okay.
And, and I would expect that this, this may be a, a modification as well, once we, once you confirm that. I, I, I hear everything that's being said tonight. You know, I, I have a different opinion. You know, I, I, my involvement as a member of this board has been to help our town resolve our building crises, which is what we're in. And as a property professional, you know, this is, I think that there's a lot of people who, who have a lot of skills in what they bring to the table. You know, if the, if, if we didn't have so much square footage already, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to maintain it. And, and I mean, we know, we can't escape, to me, we can't escape the reality that, again, 80% of 55,000 square feet is already being used. You know, that we have this building, we have Ritter Building, and we have buildings with, with real needs and real concerns. And, and I, I think that the conversation has already been had. I think that there were four years spent on the best use of every single parcel in town property, that this has been thoroughly vetted and thoroughly explored. I think that, you know, so, I, I think that a lot of people are fed up and frustrated that we can't seem to find a way to move ourselves forward.
We have done nothing but move forward. Now, maybe not to the speed you wanted. There was never been a time where we've just, in the last six or seven years, where we didn't have a building reuse task force, that we didn't look at and had studies done on all the buildings, not just the ones we're talking about, but all, all the buildings in use in town, that we haven't had money spent. So there's been progress all along. What, what I'm saying, as somebody who's gone through multiple buildings, you know, are tactics. And the tactics of how to present something and how to market something so the town meeting accepts it are not trivial. That's all I'm saying to you. And I am not using scare tactics.
Who's saying something's trivial?
Well, because you're saying things are already assumed, like we've already had that conversation. Nobody has had a conversation about a new building. Nobody. Zero people have had, except your committee, have had discussions, meaningful discussions about a new building. We've talked about it. It has been implied. We spent $50,000 at annual town meeting to get to the, the number that we're talking about. And the number starts a dialogue that hasn't been had. And that's all I'm warning you against. I want something to pass. Nobody wants something more to pass more than I do. I'm sure we're equally on that page. I don't want to put my feelings about getting something to move forward any higher than yours. I'm saying tactically, there are ways to get people coming along with you. And if you have to fight your own obstacles that you put in front of you, all I'm saying is you're not, potentially, you're not helping. I'm not scaring people, and I'm not afraid of my own shadow, to use your own words. Believe me, I've done this long enough to know what I think needs to be done. Now, you may have a different opinion on timing. That's fine. I'm just trying to point out obstacles that I think you're self-imposing, and that could be critical in the assessment of where this goes. That's all I'm saying.
These obstacles are no more overcome if we don't do this. So-
That's what we disagree on. That's where we disagree.
So, so doing, doing nothing, right? If, if we don't propose to continue to move in a forward direction, where we find ourselves come, come May of next year's with the same exact information that we have, you know, that we will have on November the 16th, and, and based on the professionals we've hired, that any future product that we plan will cost more by about 4% if we start this even later. You know, 4% a year if we start this later. I, I don't, I'm having a, a hard time understanding what any community gain, a, and, you know, as we talk about the TC, the Turkey Hill Elementary School, the, the best thing we can do as a town for Turkey Hill Elementary School is to get this project behind us. So that, you know, we have to do better about focusing on the needs of now, now. You know, we've had these needs in our community for too long. And, and we ca, and I think we have to stop saying, process, process, and start saying, you know, we have people in our community who matter, who have needs that need to get addressed, that we have, we have people working in buildings that, that need significant work. We have, we have people in a building right now, right now, 40,000 square feet or so, if 80, and I'm going low on 80% of 55, but that's 40,000-plus square feet across the street in a building that needs nine to 10 million dollars of work to stay standing. Like, that's the result of the TCP Design Committee, is that, that's something that we, we were able to conclusively identify, that if we don't want to do anything, we still got to spend $9 million. So I think, I think that the town, over the last two years, has heard about consolidated uses at one piece of property. And, and this is a continuation of that conversation. If the town votes no, you know, then, then the town votes no. And, and the town has voted no on many things, and that is what has gotten us to this point we are at of what are the available options. And I, I don't see many available options here. So I'm, I'm all ears for any solution that helps us, any solution. But I'm not so open to all the, all the noes and nays. And, you know, those are things that I think we can explain and we can help people come together on, but they're not reasons to stop.
I never, it's not a binary thing. It's not indicating stopping. We'll, we'll stop the conversation because it's not going anywhere. And we have three members who are probably checking their news feeds at this point, so.
Actually, I'm riveted to this conversation, so.
Well, too, too bad. Anyway, I'm fine with the number. I mean, the number is the number. I'm, you know, I think there's going to be objections to it. But again, I, I hope your powers of persuasion are, are well-served because otherwise we are kind of nowhere, but that's fine.
Well, I mean, where we are is, we will find ourselves, if, if we go to town with this request now, and the town says, I need to know this, I need to know that, before I can make a decision. Then we spend six more months putting together the information so that way they can get more information, you know. But it's hard to do any of that without more money.
Okay. Does anybody have an objection to anything on the, on the rewording of L? No? Okay. M. This is needed for the culvert, right?
Yes.
All right. So after last issue, it's probably a flyby here. The custody of the rear New Townsend Road, this is the one without a clear title?
No. N is the one that was, the parcel was-
Oh, it was improperly-
Yes.
Okay, identified. Okay.
So this is correcting that vote.
Okay, that's correct. So O is the one with, doesn't have a clear title.
Right.
Okay. So again, unless somebody can show us that we're going to have a clear title, I don't know what, what we're voting on here. So you're going to be speaking with the Conservation Commission Chair?
Yes. So between now and next week, because next week will be the final vote on all the articles.
Yep.
I'll speak with the Conservation Chair, but I will be reordering everything according to how they're normally ordered, as far as money articles up front and similar articles like the easements together and so forth. So for that article, I'll try to order it correctly, so it doesn't-
Well, I want to work with you on the ordering of these anyway, so. All right. Okay. P is the request by the Park Commission to include Marshall Park in the sewer service area. So, anybody, nope, there shouldn't be any objection to that being included, right?
Yeah.
Then we have lots of, we have some district, some changes in-
The last-
District designations.
Yeah. The last four, the Planning Board. And the Land Use Director will be at the Finance Committee's public hearing.
Can he be here next week, just in case we have a question about any of these?
I can ask him. Actually, he will be here next week reg, on another topic.
Oh, okay. So these are all Planning Board issues that we can hear from them. Water Supply Protection District, inserting a map, and that, and T, is T the last one, or do we add anything? No, T is the last one. Oh, my God. Okay, good. T, we'll get to T probably around 11 o'clock, maybe. And that's just some subdivision, lot area definitions. Doesn't like to change, well, yeah. Minor changes, it looks like.
Yes. Minor changes to each of the articles.
Okay. All right. Any other questions about the articles? So next week, be prepared to vote recommendations on these. And you will have all the appropriate financial- financial impacts.
Yes, yeah.
Good, okay. All right, discussion on evaluation of proposals of the Landscape Design Services for Thirty School Street. The Town Manager and the Town Manager's Office provided us that they wanted us to go over the basic scoring criteria for each of the three submissions. Did everybody get that, number one, and did everybody do that, number two? Everybody get them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Did everybody provide a score?
No.
No.
Okay, when do you need these by? Besides tonight, obviously?
Um, they should be before the next meeting, when the interviews will be held.
Can everybody get them by end of day Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The reference checks, just, that was a question that came up.
Yes, I asked, I, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Our office, um, uh, the Assistant Town Manager is doing the reference checks.
Yeah, so don't do number two. So, they didn't have, they didn't need five of us, what, Tab C, I meant, is the references and reputations. We didn't have five of us calling the same people, I'm sure they'd be thrilled with that.
Didn't I just talk to somebody there? It's just for my scoring, it's for my scorecard.
And to schedule those interviews, how much time do you think you need for each interview?
Between thirty and forty-five minutes, at least.
So...
Do you think we need to interview all of them? I mean, I, I've already...
All of them, there's three.
Yeah, but, I mean, I've already eliminated one, I mean, do, do we need to...
I'm sure you've eliminated two!
Like, do we, I'm saying, like, do, i- if there's a common thread here, that one person's on the...
I have not eliminated anybody.
But I'm, what I'm saying is that on Thursday, when we submit these things back, if there's a common thread that all of us have marked down the same person as an example, why have them come out for an interview?
Our, our F P says that we have to interview, um, at least three firms.
Okay.
So we only receive three, that's...
But that's only if you follow process.
Well, having participated in interviews in the past from the interviewee side, I mean, I, I think there's some value in, in allowing each of the firms to come and present, 'cause, uh, many times you can see the interviews can carry some weight.
Yeah. So I'd say at least thirty minutes, 'cause that, then we tell them, they have, they'll have fifteen minutes to present anything they wanna present, and then we'll have, open it up for questions. I don't think we can limit it to less than that, I mean, I don't see how we can limit it to less than that.
Okay.
Not, not to get anything meaningful out of it, at least.
Till thirty minutes, and I'll leave a five-minute buffer for who needs.
Yeah, yeah. And, and tell them, we, we, I, I, we will hold them, I will hold them to, it has to be between their, any initial presentation they wanna do, which they're allowed to do, we, it has to be, you know, up to fifteen minutes. We're not gonna go more than fifteen.
Yeah, we'll give them that instruction.
Yep. So, and I don't, as far as the water, I'll let them, you know...
Yeah, that will be according to when they're available.
Uh, vote on the revised Massachusetts COVID-nineteen emergency paid sick leave policy, that is one hell of a title. That is in our Google Drive.
Yes.
Has there been any changes since the last time we looked at?
Uh, one, well, so there was the original policy.
Right.
Yeah.
But we've been reviewing drafts of this, I believe, haven't we? Oh, okay.
No.
There was another policy?
Um...
Okay.
On September, so the original emergency paid sick leave, um, legislation was, um, was supposed to end on September thirtieth, while on September twenty-ninth, the governor extended, um, that law, so now extends till April first to two thousand twenty-two. And, um, it added another, um, option for, um, for which leave may be taken. And that's under bullet number three, under number two.
Did you get a medical diagnosis?
No, needs obtained or recovered from...
Which, which, where are we going? What, what Roman numeral section are we, was this in?
Three, purposes for which leave may be taken.
Okay, yeah.
Number two.
Oh, number two, okay, there you go.
Bullet number three.
Gotcha. Need to obtain or recover from an immune, okay.
Uh, another, um, change from the original policy was, uh, the grid that, um, shows, uh, employees who've been on leave, who've been exposed, um, what they're required to do, as far as, uh, the active monitoring adds in the fourteen days, so it's defined.
Okay.
And, on the note, after the last bullet point of section four, sorry, section five, it's, and was changed to and/or, so individuals who have had COVID in the last ninety days or who have, um, received, uh, full vaccination status do not need to quarantine after exposure.
Single dose of Janssen, is that supposed to be John?
No, that's the correct.
That's the, that's what it's called, the Janssen, okay.
And the last two sentences are no. So that's booster shots are newer development, sorry, three sentences.
So if you had COVID in the, in the, in the last ninety days, or if you've been vaccinated...
Fully vaccinated. You do not need to quarantine following exposure, like a close contact.
Okay.
You monitor your symptoms.
Okay, I'm not a medical professional, I just have...
This is straight from the state.
No, no, I, I hear you, but I, it seems like if you, if you had it, that you could trans, I thought that was the whole per, point, is that you could still transmit it even if you were not exhibiting any symptoms.
They're saying in the last ninety days, so you've, you have an immunity for a period of time after having had it.
Okay.
I'm not a medical professional either, but this is verbatim from DPH.
Okay. Any questions about those modifications?
None.
Do we need a vote?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a vote regarding the revised Massachusetts COVID-nineteen emergency paid sick leave policy as presented by the Town Manager.
I move we approve the revised Massachusetts emergency COVID-nineteen paid sick leave policy as presented by the Town Manager.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Okay, uh, next, approval of minutes of October fifth. Uh, anybody have any changes to the minutes of October fifth?
No, I submitted them in advance, and they were made.
Okay, excellent, then I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of October fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
I move to approve the minutes of October fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Warrants, payroll warrant in the amount of nine-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, payroll deduction warrant in the amount of six-hundred-five-thousand-three-hundred-eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents. And accounts payable warrant in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-four-hundred-ninety dollars and eighty-five cents. Well, that's going down, any action items?
Um, let me check. Yes, uh, I submitted a couple of requests to the, um, to the Town Manager. Uh, one was just about costs, uh, as part of my preparation for a, uh, presentation, to have, uh, just the costs for what's been spent on the TAPE and VERTEX studies, as well as all, uh, money that's been spent related to building plans in the last couple of years.
Okay.
And then the second one is on, this is new, um, speaker box over near the new crosswalk that's installed continues to ask to change password.
We're aware.
Okay. That's it.
What is?
The, uh, crosswalk, that was installed as part of Complete Streets.
Well, I haven't crossed, I haven't crossed the street yet by foot, so.
And thank you for the, uh, for the business card.
And just to note, I did take care of the first request.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other action files? Uh, committee reports, Mr. Moreno?
None.
Mr. Dwyer?
None.
Mr. Franco?
None.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yes, uh, Council of Aging had a meeting this morning. Uh, unfortunately, they were not able to make quorum, uh, and so they did not have an official meeting. Instead, uh, we had a conversation with the members that were present for about an hour, just about different, different, you know, kinda needs and stuff, that was very off-agenda. We also talked about this building project, and, uh, and their support for it or not, and, and what, you know, we would need to do to get support for it. So it was a really good conversation, uh, they will, they, I'm not sure if they're gonna attempt to have another meeting this month, or if they were just planning to meet again next month. TCP Design Committee also met, uh, last week, and, uh, we already talked about kinda the highlights of that discussion, which are that, the timeline for these cost estimates. Um, basically, we, we worked out the, um, the rest of the, um, programming or schematic design for the new build, uh, their, the civil engineer, um, we also have a good layout for what the parking's gonna be, the civil engineer's going to make, um, their markups to depict, uh, properly what that, the roadways would look like, and then the architect is also gonna just make some modifications that the board approves, it was really name changes a couple other things, uh, adjacencies. And they also, uh, once that's made, they will then engineer their design over the course of about two weeks, and then they will have, uh, cost estimates for about two more weeks. Uh, they're gonna do what they can to expedite that process, but it, it results in us getting a, a cost estimate somewhere, uh, around the twenty-seventh of November and no later than, excuse me, twenty-seventh of October, and no later than the, uh, second of November. At our last meeting, uh, moving to the library, so the library did not meet, however, the library, the last meeting, I, I made a request on behalf of the library for additional funding related to funding a, uh, position on Fridays, so the library can be open for additional hours. Based on the feedback from the meeting last week, uh, had a conversation with, uh, the library director and the chair of the library trustees, uh, and they will approach this subject, uh, going into the regular, uh, during the regular budgeting process next year. Uh, they would like an opportunity this year, if possible, uh, to come before the board, uh, just to get a head start on getting this out there about why they're looking for this, and to get that word out. Uh, also followed up with Lisa LeBlanc, related to, uh, a presentation to us, uh, on how we can support the school curriculum, the civics requirements, now that the students have a new civics requirement that went into effect this year, uh, and, and they're all, uh, eighth graders, uh, are, I believe it's eighth graders, are all required to do a, a community project, and so, um, tentatively, I think the second of November may work best for them. Um, I did talk, reach out to the Town Manager for some potential dates. Um, they're, she's looking to come with, uh, curriculum specialist and with the superintendent, so that way they can be available to answer any additional questions that the board may have. And then the last is, I attended a, um, meeting for the Community Foundation, which is based out of, uh, Fitchburg. Um, they had a meeting last Thursday, that was, uh, rep, attended by, uh, different community leaders, our Senator Cronin was there, Ms. Mike Kuschmerich, as well as the mayor of, uh, Fitchburg. Uh, Community Foundation just approved, uh, twenty-thousand-dollar grant to the Council of Aging, uh, that was out of a hundred-thousand-dollar request. And, uh, so went to show my support, this, it was their twentieth anniversary, uh, and so that, that went well, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Uh, I did attend the Finance Committee meeting, so there, as, as the Chair of the Finance Committee noted in public comment, their public hearing about the warrant is this Thursday at seven, right in this location, on Zoom and, and in person. And, uh, I did mention on, on the articles that, that drew some discussion, I mentioned those to you already, and also, uh, as Mr. Passio said, that because of the late-breaking numbers of when they're gonna come in, they are going to need to consider a public hearing on, uh, on these, some, two of those articles, or at least one of them, when the number comes in, that they cannot discuss now, because the number won't be ready. So, that is the Finance Committee. And of course, you heard from the Chair of the Finance Committee on the, um, Chapter Seventy funding formula and policies that will be on, at their meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yes, twenty-eighth. Okay, um, upcoming events, yes, well, that's the first one. Uh, but actually, before then, there, again, the Finance Committee meeting this Thursday, and then we are having our meeting next Tuesday, and then we'll have the, uh, October twenty-eighth meeting with the FinCom. I think we're meeting, uh, well, when, when is the last Monday, twenty-sixth is the last Tuesday? I meant the last Tuesday, so we're not meeting on the twenty-sixth, correct?
Okay.
So that's the only day we're not meeting between now and town, special town meeting. The only Tuesday we're not meeting. Any public comment from the public? Public comment from the board? Okay, we have an executive session, and I intend to motion to go into executive session and to adjourn after exiting executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty, section twenty-one, paragraph three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. It is about the fire union. So again, we will go into executive session, not to return to open session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for me. Good night, everybody, have a great week, take care of yourselves, and take care of each other, until next Tuesday. Bye. All right, take a little break while they undo these.